All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Bill Brennan, Township Solicitor. And before we begin the formal meeting, we have on our schedule two very short, I hope, public hearings which are required by the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code. Whenever zoning ordinances or SALDO, which is a subdivision and land development ordinance, whatever they're changed, there has to be a public meeting. And by way of background, we have our ordinances codified through an outsourcing company, General Code, and we've been doing this for quite some time. And it's been 10 years since we've had what is known as a legislative update. And we met with representatives of General Code, and they go through our ordinance and pick out things that are inconsistent. Sometimes names are changed. And there are ordinances that no longer have any meaning. For example, we have an ordinance regulating a township sewer authority, but we don't have one. So it's really just cleaning up the errors and the mistakes. And I can say with some assurance, nothing of substance has changed. But we need two public hearings on this, and you're allowed to ask any questions you like. But I assure you again, you know, there's nothing, there are no secrets, and nothing is changing. So in any event, the first public hearing is now open, and it has to do with ordinance 2024-02, which regards changes to the township zoning ordinance. And the more significant changes have to do with, as I said before, the regulations for a sewer authority that we don't have. There's a removal of a section for fire suppression systems. This is an interesting story. I wish I could go into it. But years ago, the township had a requirement for fire suppression systems for all new housing that went to the Supreme Court. And unhappily, before my time, the case was lost, but that ordinance remained on the record. So it has to be removed. There is a regulation concerning the local economic revitalization tax abatement that no longer exists. And there were things of that nature that have been taken out, and these items have been cleaned up. There were some name changes. For example, district justice has changed to Magisterial District Judge. Federal Insurance Administrator has changed to Federal Insurance and Mitigation Administration. Flood Hazard District has changed to Flood, Hazard, and Wetlands District. So, let me see, what else is here? That's about it for the zoning ordinance. So at this point, I'll ask if the supervisors have any questions about this process. Lori has spent a lot of time on it, and we've had meetings, and I'm satisfied, as I've said, that these are necessary, really typographical corrections. Any questions? All right, seeing none, the public hearing concerning the zoning ordinance is hereby closed. And now we will jump right into the public hearing concerning the same sorts of things for the SALDO, which is, again, the subdivision and land development ordinance, which deals with the details of construction and land development. So there were a number of other items, but, and there were some corrections to the Uniform Construction Code, the definition of building sewer, there were climate and geographic design criteria, some information concerning termites, things of that nature. And there were some other items that were not really SALDO, but there were some SALDO items in this, so we had to go through this advertisement to be in compliance with the MPC. So with that, and the board has seen this, with that, are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public about the changes to the SALDO? All right, seeing none, we will happily close the second public hearing of the evening, and we will discharge our court reporter and thank her for her attendance. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that done, we'll start the regular business meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
... of the United States of America, and to the public for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, our board has John Callahan, Danielle Jewen, Martha Majeski, Bob Cooney, and myself, Mark Donovan. Lori Getz is our manager, but Bill Brennan is our solicitor, and Paul Battenger is here as our township engineer. Valentina Mitterer is our assistant manager. And we had executive sessions that I need to announce from April 25th, May 1st, and May 8th for personnel litigation and, did we have property acquisition in there?
Yes.
Yes, property acquisition. And we'd like to start off the night here with acknowledgement of outstanding service by Bob Malk of the Open Space Commission. Thank you, Bob.
I want to thank everyone for coming.
We're going to go ahead and read out a nice little resolution for you for the evening. It's a resolution of the Board of Supervisors of Schuylkill Township, Chester County, Pennsylvania, in appreciation of outstanding public service by Bob Malk. Whereas Bob Malk was appointed to the Schuylkill Township Open Space Commission in 2006 and has resigned from his service effective February 14th, 2024. And whereas Bob Malk faithfully and with honor, integrity, and distinction provided sound counsel to the Board of Supervisors and devoted himself to the fulfillment of the township's mission. And whereas Bob Malk has provided outstanding service and guidance to the Schuylkill Township Open Space Commission in acquiring open space property. And whereas Bob Malk volunteered numerous hours, incurred personal sacrifice, and exhibited outstanding community spirit in his service, acting as an agent of change to ensure that Schuylkill Township continues to maintain its residents' quality of life. And whereas Bob Malk's unwavering commitment, willingness, and ability to understand and respond to the concerns of the people of Schuylkill Township has made a substantial contribution to the betterment of the township. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Schuylkill Township does hereby commend Bob Malk for his time-honored legacy of dedication, enthusiasm, and outstanding public service given to the township of Schuylkill for the past 18 years. Thank you, Bob. We really appreciate it all. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, right.
Well, I tell you what. I really thank the township for having the opportunity to serve. Because I had the privilege of working with bright, talented people who shared my passion for preserving open space. And together, we conserved 300 acres. And it was quite a ride, at times quite a wild and crazy ride. But I'm very, very grateful for the satisfaction that it gave me. Thank you.
Hey, Bob. Bob, we have one more for you before you leave.
You were always so good with the gavel. We figured we'd make one for you.
Hey, Tom, if I were you, I wish you could just go get the thing. There you go. One more for the road. Our manager would like to grab a picture of us all.
Okay.
How would you like to do that? Do you want to?
Do you want me to stand back here?
If you want to take a seat here, you can take a seat right here. I'll shuffle over.
Oh, you want to sit down?
Hey, Mark, you might never get it.
Yeah, we can stand around.
I know. There we go.
Oh, the gavel, too.
Smile. Do you want to make a funny face?
It's all funny faces.
Great job, great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
All right. I stole a chair.
All right, we're only going to slide down one.
That's real gold, Bob, around there. Keep it in the sink.
And so we'll make it nice and official. I'm going to make a motion to pass that resolution, number 2024-13, recognition of outstanding service by Bob Malk. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just want to say, I had the pleasure of working side by side with Bob and Tim from the very first conception of creating an open space commission, and it's been a tremendous amount of work and hours that nobody knows except you that you put in. So it's really appreciated, and Township is a better place because of you. So thank you.
All righty, well, on to the more hefty parts of our agenda. We'll go right on to the consent agenda. I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of the Board of Supervisors' April 10th Business Meeting and April 25th Workshop Meeting and all departmental committee, commission, and council reports as posted and received by the Board of Supervisors for the month of April 30th, 2024. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
To the Treasurer's Report and Payment of Bills, I'll make a motion that we consider acceptance of Treasurer's Report for period ending April 30th, 2024. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Lori?
For month ending April 30th, 2024, we have a general fund balance of just over six, just about, just over $6.1 million. That's up a bit over $900,000 from this time last month, on target for this time of the year.
Thanks. Is there any questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we approve dispersment stated May 8th, 2024. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
To board discussion items, this is discussion on Sedgley Farms' land development plans. The applicant will be present, well, is present, to discuss and review recent changes to submitted plans and answer any questions.
Thank you. Actually, I think we're here mostly tonight for the board to discuss with us issues and questions it has, which was, as I understand, the purpose of the meeting prior to the last meeting, so that Mr. Brennan has some guidance. So we've received Paul's letter. There are a couple of things in there that we think he missed. For example, he says that there wasn't a Pennsylvania fish and boat letter. There were two, and they're in the environmental study. There are a couple of other things like that, but they're minor things. I think the real question is, were you on any major things?
Major, minor, I, the last letter was May the 3rd of 2024. I don't know that we want to spend the evening going through that again. I mean, most of the things that are in there have been discussed ad nauseam, and there are some things that have been resolved, but I, there are other matters that aren't resolved. And I just don't want to leave here with you thinking that there's nothing out there. My answer would be, well, whatever is in the engineering letters is in the engineering letters, and that's the position that Paul has taken.
I understand. There are some of the things in there that were in the plans that were submitted that supposedly were reviewed that he hasn't acknowledged were in there. There are certain things that were in, like the fish and boat letter. If you want to, we can go through the probably 25 places where we thought that that letter should have commented.
I would suggest on that, if you think that there were things that were submitted, if you guys could write to us and point those out, that would be great.
Okay.
It'll be simpler.
We can do that outside, outside the meeting.
Yeah, I think that would be fine, because there were some, the way, the submission did come in, you know, in various pieces, so I think that that would probably be the easiest way to handle that.
That's fine, and we can, we can do that and get that out post haste. But the, because we've gone through it, and we've made the comments on those paragraphs.
Okay.
But then there are other paragraphs in there that Paul espouses a legal position that we don't know, it's not an engineering position, that we don't know what the township's position is on it. We've explained our position on it, and we've not heard back from the township, and I'm sure that Paul's...
I think we've had letters going back and forth raising certain issues concerning East Philip and legal matters like that, and...
And we've responded.
Yeah, and so we've told you...
And we've not gotten a response to our responses.
To your response.
Nor have we gotten a response to the question of the idea of dual, dual frontage lots and things like that.
All right, well, let's say, let me just run, I have a list of things that are sort of out there that I wanted to sort of clarify tonight.
Sure.
Your email of April 23rd gave an extension under the MPC to June 14th for the Reeves Plan. And it also is extended for additional one month from its current date for the Select Sites Plan. And I had that as June 28th. I just want to make sure that we're on the same page with the Select Sites Plan deadline as being July 28th. Is that correct?
I thought it was half later than that, but it, you know, hopefully it won't make any difference, because it would only be if our plan was approved in the select and not appealed, that we would then withdraw, or that the township agreed that with the easement that we have under the recorded easement that we have, that we don't need a plan approval for the Select Sites Plan, that we could then just withdraw.
All right, well, as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, everything on the Select Sites Plan is on the Reeves Plan, is that correct?
Correct.
Except that there were some corrections or modifications made to the Reeves Plan with things such as the vertical horizontal curves and things like that, so to take care of those engineering issues. But those changes haven't been made on the Select Sites Plan, to my knowledge, because we only have one plan, the original one that was filed.
The Select Site Plan was not an improvement. Jeez, I'm sorry, does that, do you have any water or anything? Thank you. The Select Site Plan was simply a plan to create a right-of-way. All of the work was to be on the Reeves Plan, even in that right-of-way, even in that easement. It was not to be on the Select Sites Plan.
All right, here's one of the problems, though. And it's not a major problem, but we have to deal with it. The MPC says that every plan must be submitted to the Planning Commission, as you know. And this plan was filed years ago and never submitted to the Planning Commission. So as we're, the Planning Commission's never looked at the Select Sites Plan. So to cover that responsibility, it's on the agenda for our next meeting, I think, isn't it? And you are cordially invited to attend. I don't know what's going to, you know, happen with that at the meeting, and, you know, it's just that I've never understood really the relationship between the two plans, other than one's behind the other, and the Select Sites Plan will not be needed under some circumstances. But, so I guess the Planning Commission on that is a week from Thursday? Is that when it is?
It's on Wednesday next week.
Wednesday, what is it?
The 15th.
15th. So that's out there, and, but again...
I will not be in town, but my client can probably...
Well, I'm sure, Todd, and I, you know, I have no intention of making a presentation, because I'm not sure why it's out there, and I was going to ask you tonight, why won't you withdraw it? Because it seems to be irrelevant if I'm, I may be missing something, but go ahead.
It's a question of whether subdivision, whether we need to create a right-of-way by subdivision, or whether we can place our improvements in an easement which does not require a subdivision. So it's a question of which, which way the township comes down on that issue.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
The Select Sites versus the other plan access that's being proposed, does the, I don't have it all in front of me right now, the Sedgley Farm Plan, does that utilize the recorded easement?
Yeah.
That one utilizes, it's just straight through on that recorded easement that crosses both property boundaries by a little bit.
No, let me, let me explain. There was a 50-foot-wide right-of-way that was 65% on the Select Sites Lot and 35% on the lot next to it. When we got into this, instead of utilizing the 35% that was on our neighboring property, trying to be nicest as we can to that neighbor, we created a wider area on the Select Sites property for the road. We created it on the Select Sites Plan, showing it as a right-of-way, and filed a land development plan for that, or subdivision plan, to create that right-of-way. In the meantime, we simply created an easement which covers the exact same area as the right-of-way on the Select Sites Plan. That was recorded.
So it's a question, it's a question of whether you're calling it a right-of-way or an easement? Is that what you're asking? Or is that what you're...
It's a question of whether the township believes we need to create a right-of-way by subdivision as opposed to utilizing the easement that's recorded and permits the, its use for the road and/or drive.
Let's stay on this for a second. I'm sorry.
I was going to suggest, I mean, just to clarify, I think your position has been, we've got A, B, and C options. You can, you've got what's on the plan, listed on the plan, from '62 to '69. You, the option A. Option B is you are creating an easement by buying that property and putting the easement. And option three is you are using subdivision to get through. And you, I think you've said consistently, you can use either, that's your position, that you can use either...
Our position is we could, we could use the...
You can use either, either of those three options.
We could use the 50-foot one, but we're not, and we've never shown a road through there, because we didn't want to involve the neighbor's property. We didn't have to. And since we own the next-door property, we just widened it to put that 35% into what was the Select Sites. So we don't have, we do have the option of using the 50B. We've just never elected to do that for the purpose of being neighborly. The idea of whether what, what is created is a road through the easement that's recorded and permits it to be developed as a road and dedicated to the township, or whether the township says, no, actually, you're creating a road right-of-way, and that requires you to file a subdivision plan for it. That's why we filed that plan, and that's why that plan's on hold, because we don't know the township's position as to whether it can simply be through the easement, or whether it can, whether it requires the approval of that as a subdivided road right-of-way.
Yeah, I think I understand what you're, what you're doing with the subdivision. You are not dividing it into two lots. You are dividing the easement off, but leaving the ownership of the lot is the same as it was before, right?
Unless the township accepts it as a right-of-way, ownership of the right-of-way, and then the lot would be smaller by the size of the right-of-way.
But the house is on a lot that's large enough, I think, regardless of the takeaway.
Correct.
But my concern is subdivision is a divine, is a defined term in the ordinance. It says a division of lots into two lots. And what you're doing is not that. It's you're subdividing off an easement, but the lot is remaining the lot. Can you help us with that?
I understand, and it's very clear in the law that if you're creating an easement, you don't need a subdivision for the easement. But I think the law is that if you're creating a right-of-way, it's required to have a recorded right-of-way plan, which is a subdivision plan. And that's what, that's why we filed.
Let me, I'm sorry.
I think I'm on a similar track as you right now. The, speaking, so talking about it as a right-of-way, to create a right-of-way, it wouldn't, would it be necessary, for example, if the township did not take dedication of it, to have a right-of-way at all? And would that kind of make it unnecessary to have that Select Sites Plan at all, because then you wouldn't need it, so be not a right-of-way? It wouldn't be a public right-of-way.
Our by-right proposal requires it to be a road, and therefore a right-of-way, and therefore the subdivision plan. Our waiver request is that it be a private, there's a section of your ordinance of, and it's cited in Paul's letter, of driveway acting as a private road. And that doesn't require a right-of-way and could go through the easement. We'd love to have you do it as private through the easement, but we don't want to be turned down by you saying, well, you don't have it as a public road.
So that's, so going back to my three flavors of easement, that you could do, in your position, you could do the private, drive-through option A or B. You don't need the subdivision for that.
Correct.
That's only for public dedication, for a public road.
Correct.
Okay. But there's, you're, I think consistently you've made that position, that there's three ways you can build this, A, B, C.
And the, and the one that would not require the subdivision on the Select Sites would require a waiver for the Reeves Plan.
Have you put a waiver request in writing? Was it on the plan, it's on the plan?
Yeah, you have that letter of September of '22, and you have them also on the plan.
Now here, let's go, if I may, go back. The Select Sites Lot is in the R2 Zone, and it says you can have a house, and you can have a driveway, you can have accessory uses. But driveway is defined in the SALDO, and the zoning ordinance is a private cartway providing for vehicular and pedestrian access between a public street and a parking lot within a lot or property. And what I've been struggling with is, and we've talked about this, because I think you said this is a great goose or something, it was amusing, and...
I said, it doesn't matter what you call it.
Okay, all right. But let's get back to that. Where in the zoning ordinance does, does the R2 Zone allow something other than a driveway as an accessory use?
If, let me, let me answer that in two different ways. First of all, there's a separate part that talks about driveways that serve five or more properties or commercial vehicles.
Is that the one with the request? There's language that says that the supervisors may authorize that, but that's by way of a waiver.
As, as...
As a SALDO. Okay, I'm talking zoning now, but go ahead, all right.
So that, that is what we've asked for in our waiver, is that it to be a private road through there, constructed to private road standards, but be a driveway. So it doesn't need to have a right-of-way, so it can be done through the easement. With respect to your, the answer to your question, if it's not granted as a driveway, and it's required to be a road, when we sub, that's why you subdivide off the right-of-way, and the road is in the right-of-way, it's not on the lot.
Even if it's a private right-of-way, that's technically correct, yeah. You would need that, yeah.
This is your own deal. We have a copy of it, but you've made a deal with your affiliate, I guess, saying you can have your...
It's recorded. We've given you copies.
We have, we have that, okay. All right, all right.
It's recorded last, last December, I guess, a year ago.
Well, I do have a couple of other, are we finished on that? Have we beaten that to death? All right. There are a number of matters that, you know, are out there, and we understand your position, and I just want to make sure that you don't leave saying, well, they have no concerns, and we have concerns. One of them is the JD that's not in, and we understand that you're waiting for it, and I was hoping Todd would run in tonight withholding his JD, but...
So are we.
Do you agree that if the JD comes in, and it's, you know, problematic for you, that you may have to move things around?
Yes, and I believe you can approve the plan condition... Yes, and I believe you can approve the plan conditioned upon, if we don't have it by June twelfth, you can approve the plan conditioned upon the issuance of the J P, J D consistent with the, the wetlands as shown on the plan. And if it's not, then we have to come back and revise it.
Is there any preliminary, sometimes developers have a preliminary idea of where the wetlands are, I mean, is this a, a, a safe shot that the J D is going to be clean? Or are we taking some risks here?
I don't know how to answer that, quite frankly. We have, we have submitted the wetland study. We, the wetlands on our property haven't changed. We were asked to add the wetlands on the Aqua property, and we added them. So that the wetlands that were issued a J D, uh, in the early part of this century, were the wetlands on our property. We don't have any reason to believe they'll change. And so what hasn't, what's, what's new in the, in the J D request is the wetlands that are on the Aqua property, and the only way that they would affect us would be wetland margin issues from whatever those boundaries are.
All right, are any other questions on that?
And the issue of whether the wetlands in the area of Culver Crossing are of the size that they were, uh, according to our study, or whether they're any bigger. And that would only determine, that wouldn't change the plan. It would just change the type of permit you would have to get to construct it.
All right. Reverse frontage lots has been a, a nightmare issue for years, can we say, or at least many months, a concern, and I think it's legitimate of the board, is what happens if later on down the road, somebody wants to put a, a pool in the backyard, and there's a, a flag saying, no, no, you can't, it's a reverse frontage lot, and these reserve strips don't count, and where do we, how do you, how do we handle a prospective problem when you're off in Florida and Todd is wherever he is, and, and there, and we have to deal with that?
Well, I'm here to eat crow, to tell you that I was factually wrong that what in front of Judge Nagel wasn't with a one-foot strip along those properties. But the lot on, uh, on Belmont and Wells directly abutted the right-of-way, just like the lots on Dorchester do. And that, so Judge Nagel was deciding that there was no problem of revert, reverse frontage lots off a plan with direct contact. And says, and the language I have there, if you want me to pull it, is the township has no reason to deny the road.
Could I, could I divert you slightly from legal on this one? And bring it back to more practical matters, because legal bogs us all down in, you know, arguments between you two.
Sure.
So, coming back to more practical standpoint, what is the, what is the purpose for the, for, just to explain it, what is the purpose of including the reverse frontages? What is like your practical take on why you're putting them there?
We have no option. We have a fifty-foot, fifty-four-foot wide strip that is the access to our property that we have to put a street down. We, this is a property that you can't develop with a lot between your road and the existing lots on another property. That's why this is not a plat that is creating lots that are reverse frontage lots, because we're not creating those lots. There is, you would, you would be confiscating our property if you said we could not put a road in there because of existing lots that abut the only access to our property. So, I'm sure that's part of the reason why Judge Nagel said the township can't deny the road. And, I mean, that was his last sentence in the section.
I had my Nagel language last time, I don't have it in front of me now, but my understanding of the, of the Nagel issue was that there were no, um, uh, there were no reverse frontage lots on Belmont Terrace because there was no street there.
That's what he said.
Can I ask if you see any, again, going back to practical instead of legal, do you see any prac, do you see any practical concerns with, if there were no, if you didn't include the reverse frontages, what would be the effect of that? Is there, would, and if Todd?
We're not creating any reverse frontage lots of ours. It's the existing lots of, that exist there that abut our property.
You're saying that.
And it's the only access into the property, so we couldn't access that property. That's why I believe that what John Sartor said before, that the, that the reserve strips don't get read in conjunction with that, and therefore we propose the one acre or the one foot on both sides.
I'm just asking what would happen, like, in, in simple terms, what would happen if they weren't there?
If they're, if they're, if what, weren't there?
The reserve strips.
If the reserve.
If you just, if you just didn't have the one-foot strips, just what happens?
There would be, there would be a, a road right-of-way that abuts.
The back of the block.
Two roads, yeah, two roads.
Thank you, okay.
Existing lots. We're not creating those lots, so the way your ordinance reads is we can't create reverse frontage lots, meaning we can't divide and have streets on both sides of the lots we're creating. That's what I believe your ordinance means. That's what I believe Judge Nagel was saying. I don't think it has anything to do with existing lots from prior, prior suburbs.
Did, did Nagel say anything about, uh, reserve strips being illegal or unlawful? Does he?
No, he, he basically said that, uh, John Sartor testified that you don't read them together, so you don't read the idea that you can't have reverse strips with reverse frontage lots. They don't get read in conjunction, because we argued that unless you would allow us to put a reserve strip in, we would abut those lots. And he said that's not the case.
So, the only reason the reserve strips are on the plan, I thought, was to solve this problem. So are you saying tonight you don't even need them?
We don't need them, but I think you might want.
You need the microphone.
Your practical.
You need the microphone.
Oh, yeah, just, sorry, I'm trying to get water.
Just add something.
There is a, Mark, talk about a practical solution. What I'm looking at is a practical solution that if we add a strip of one foot between our right-of-way of the new road and the Dorchester, and over on the Belmont Terrace side, we, we need a waiver for that. If we have that waiver, then in the future, there won't be any concern with neighbors if they're having a reverse frontage lot. So the practical solution, from my perspective, is get a waiver for a one-foot reserve strip on both sides, and then I think that eliminates future problems with people and double frontage.
All right, stay, stay.
And that's what I was about, trying to say, yeah.
Pass it over to Danielle.
Yeah, so I was going to ask this question again, I'm going to stay practical, not legal. As you mentioned, on the Belmont side, it, it's a, there is a, a paper road, an old paper road that was never put in. There are no properties that directly, are directly adjacent.
There is, there is one, there's one at the end.
Oh, yes, there is that one at the end. Have you considered, and, and I understand that your, your intent with the, with the reserve strip, right, is to min, somewhat, well, part, one of your, I think one of your interests is to somewhat mitigate the impact of having a significant road directly in the backyards of people's property. Have you considered taking the foot, one of the feet that's on the Belmont Terrace side, and moving it over to have a two-foot strip, which again is not a lot, on, on the side of Dorchester?
And it's wider than two strip, two feet, because it's, it, it's fifty-two-something. It, it's narrowest, but it's like fifty-six or fifty-seven at its widest. So, uh, we could, we could look at whether, and I guess the other question is the design of the road.
Maybe it's a question for Mr. Pollock, it's, it's a design question, it's not a legal question, John.
So, from a practical standpoint, again, um, having that one-foot strip on both sides and having a waiver for that prevents anybody saying there's double frontage lots when they go to put a pool in down, down, there's an, later down the road, someone wants to put a pool in, it's not in a front lot. So that's the idea, the practical solution of the one-foot strip. Then the lots on Dorchester, for instance, don't have frontage on the road. That's a one-foot strip that's HOA property, not open space, just HOA property. Therefore, the, the owners on Dorchester don't have direct access onto our right-of-way, therefore there's no double frontage that they could be called. So that's a practical solution. The other thing is trying to get additional, um, potential landscaping and area between the Dorchester neighbors and, um, and our, um, strip. What we, what we've asked for is a waiver on cartway width, and with that, we can have additional, between the curb of the road and the neighbors, we've got additional planting area. So that's another waiver that we're asking for. So those two waivers, I think, are the practical solutions to what you're talking about.
And you're talking about the request, was, was it to go down to twenty-eight or twenty-four, twenty?
My suggestion would be twenty-four foot in the reserves, in the, in the entry road coming in, because a, a narrow cartway helps with speed, uh, traffic. And we'll also include, I think the neighbors would like some traffic calming measures that we could add in that as well. But the idea is, we don't need a, there's no, potentially one future driveway from the west side that would tie into our road. So there's, there's no, nobody's going to be parking there for any reason. So my suggestion would be a twenty-four-foot entry road, Sedgley Road, coming in, and when we get into the rest of our neighborhood, to go to twenty-eight foot. Again, saving on impervious coverage and, you know, saltine of roads and that kind of stuff. I think for practi, for environmental reasons, go into twenty-eight foot in the rest of the neighborhood. Those are two waivers that I think are practical.
So, so I think, I think what I hear John saying is that he believes that the Nagel decision said you don't need to worry about reverse frontage, but you want to have that one-foot strip on the west side just in case.
Just so neighbors don't have, what Mark was talking about, in the future, a confusion over whether it's got frontage on both sides. And it, I think it just clears that up for the future.
We would be putting the side. We'd be putting the sidewalk on the west side so that the east side would just have the sidewalk, the twenty-four-foot road, and then a wider area for landscaping.
Is the sidewalk on the west side using that reserve strip? Is that why you need?
No, it's in the, it's in the right-of-way.
Okay. Um, something that has been raised by some township residents is concern over, it's a very straight shot, that potent, that proposed Sedgley Lane Road, and there won't be car, there won't be houses on either side, very tempting for people to drive very fast. Have you considered any kind of traffic control measures for that, that entranceway, such as speed bumps or speed, you know, humps or?
Curves, curves in the road even.
Or, yeah.
I think as final plan, we're perfectly okay with that. In fact, it's been suggested, and we, we believe that that's, for the neighbors, would be helpful, so.
This might, this might be another final plan item, but, um, again, this was not something that I think was contemplated when the plan was originally submitted in two thousand and six. Because of your efforts to mitigate some stormwater drainage issues, the road is going to be significantly elevated in comparison to the adjacent Dorchester properties by several feet in some sections. Um, have you considered what you can do, I mean, you can imagine, my road's here, my property's here, the road's here, I now have a car towering above my backyard. How are you going to address that?
Yeah, so again, with a twenty-four-foot wide cartway, we'll be able to have additional grading that will come down. And I think at its highest spot, it may be from the invert of the culvert, which is the lowest spot to the road, I think is a ma, I don't even think it's, it's like five feet, something like that. So, uh, um, any additional grading we can do there can, we can have additional landscaping in there. So that's, that's the reason.
Well, I'm five feet, so the tires would be at my head, if it was my backyard, right?
So hopefully we'll be able to do additional planting in there. We have a, we have planting, but hopefully additional planting.
Yeah, just by, just by the numbers, if you, I had the one-foot strip, and you had twenty-five feet, twelve feet, you'd have fourteen feet of, outside the, the curb that you can plant with buffer plantings for those, for those neighbors.
Fourteen feet?
Twelve, I think, twelve, John.
Twelve.
I remember looking, why am I looking at twelve, by the time you have curves?
Could you achieve sufficient buffer plantings with a twenty-eight-foot cartway?
Not as much.
Not as much?
So.
I just did want to note that the, the five lots that are on the Dorchester Avenue, they do have in their, where there would be a butting against the Sedgley Lane, that would be their rear setbacks. The one property, when Belmont Terrace goes and turns left on the west side, the property that, uh, it takes asset, takes, takes access off of Wells Road, that's actually a side setback, so it's not a front setback, or it's not a double frontage for the Wells Road property, just a clarification for everyone.
I had one other point.
Get your, get your.
I had one other thing. John, we've gone back and forth, back, I've had some questions about twenty-three oh four and twenty-three oh five of the second-class township code. Do you want to address that in writing later or talk about it tonight? It's, it has to do with, um, enacting, ordaining, surveying, laying out, et cetera, of township roads, refers to, um, an ordinance and changing and things of that nature. Do you have, do you want to discuss that tonight, or?
I, I think that's what the township has to do, it's not what we have to do.
Well, I, I think that in order, it says change in twenty-three oh five, if opening, changing, or vacating any road, then it says, uh, supervisor shall give notice and all that stuff. There hasn't been an ordinance, there hasn't been a, a, a public hearing. Are you saying this whole thing's irrelevant? What are you saying about this, if anything? Because I had asked for.
It's the same as what you do with any public, public road in the township that you get on a subdivision plan. If you're going to accept it, you have to do it at a, at a hearing. If you haven't been, then you haven't been following that.
All right, but, but we haven't accepted anything in a while that I can remember, but.
Okay, and, and right now, we're, we're suggesting that the appropriate thing is to grant a waiver to have it be private and gated, like we've said we would accept that waiver in condition, and therefore you would not be under those sections.
I think we're missing each other here. Maybe I'll send you an email tomorrow and explain, it's a little obscure, but I do think we need an answer to that, at least from my own sense of closing this, this topic out, okay?
Okay, I'm, I'll be around.
I have a question.
Sure.
You guys had a conversation with Aqua lately?
Uh, yes, and Mike Shearing from Aqua is here. We finally got the engineers together, and I'll let Mike talk about it instead of me.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Mike Shearing from Riley Riper Holland and Colle Greco, and I think most of you know our firm represents Aqua, Pennsylvania. You received a letter from us in May of two thousand and twenty-three listing several concerns. Since that time, there's been, uh, some back and forth, some exchanging of plans, and understandably confusion on Aqua's part, because this, this is an old project with many plans at play. I'm happy to say that on April twenty-fourth, we were finally able to meet with our, um, engineers and environmental specialists, Mr. Pollock and his engineer at the Aqua offices. We now have about a five-page list of things that need to be done in terms of, from Aqua's perspective. So, um, those concern, those concerns are still there, but we've made progress in eliminating some of those, and we're looking closer now, and we have more specific details in terms of, um, the stormwater basin facilities, the filters that are being used. For example, stormwater, it was explained to us that Stormwater Basin A is actually what's known as a four-bay basin, so there will be, there will be enough of the, um, the holding and the percolation to remove any sediment and turbidity and those types of things. That's what our engineers are currently doing. That's what our engineers are currently doing. So, and Mr. Polig has, has been cooperative, his engineers have been cooperative in terms of being willing to, to work with us on those. So that's the progress that I've made. It's probably not as much as, as either the Polig builders or the township would like of Aqua, but Aqua's obviously a very large company with various concerns. And although it's a large company, it still has a limited engineering staff to, to be looking at this. So that's, that's really where we are right now. When I say some of those other concerns have been eliminated, in my May 23rd letter, we indicated that we didn't want the emergency access road, or we had concern with the proposed emergency access road that was near our high-pressure distribution line outside of the reservoir. What I learned in the engineering meeting, and that's, that's what Mr. Snyder and I were trying to get those engineers together is, in fact, that emergency access road is constructed today. And when it was constructed, it was run through Aqua's engineers, and they had an inspector on site. Mr. Polig has indicated that there's no intention, whenever they, this development moves forward, or whatever happens next, for them to do any construction near the high-pressure distribution line. So it was those types of details that came out in a, at least a two-hour meeting that we were digging into, that eliminated certain of those concerns. There are others that, as I said, we continue to look at. My hope and what I'm offering to Polig builders, and to have been in touch with Lori and Bill, is that we would be able to have more information for you prior to your June meeting.
Can I ask a question, Mike?
Sure.
Do you know, at this point, whether any of the understandings that you have or will reach with Polig will require changes to the plans?
I don't know at this point. So for example, some of those stormwater basins, as, as, has now been explained in some of the detail, is that they are underground basins. And then there are filtering systems that are, that would be in place. I, I don't know if the Aqua engineers are going to come back to the Chester Valley engineers and suggest some change to that. I, I don't think there's going to be any kind of design change, I mean, in terms of layout design.
That's my concern. Is there anything that you foresee that would require lots being moved? Or, you know, basins being moved, or anything like that?
From monitoring that meeting, Bill, the only thing possibly could be, Aqua's obviously very interested in the, in the discharge points to the reservoir. But in terms of lot layout changes, no. Not that I, not that I have heard amongst the various, the engineers discussing it. I, I will say, we, you know, I know there are several plans. We're here this evening, and most of the questions are this, what I have now learned is being called the By Right Plan. But Aqua, you know, Aqua would have to review if, if there were a PR, if, if this took the direction of PRD-1 or PRD-2, for whatever reason, we would want to, want to look at that. Frankly, most of what I wrote in that May 23rd letter, and most of what Mr. Polig and Chester Valley and the Aqua engineers and I reviewed on April 24th, doesn't change, right? It's still, the primary concern is the stormwater, the stormwater discharge, and to be sure that there's not going to be erosion, sediment, turbidity to the water, or pollutants.
Let's stay on that for a second. We're not involved in your contract, and we've been very careful with the, to keep our mind on municipal matters. But is Aqua generally satisfied that if this project goes forward, that there will not be problems with the water, or any health issues, or public safety issues with this project?
I, I can't answer that yet until the engineers look closely at, at the design of the basins. I can tell you, you know, from what I heard on Basin A, because of how it's constructed, that is what Aqua was, was discussing. I can also tell you that, you know, this, this is something that Aqua has to continually monitor and be concerned about with all of its.
Swimming in that, in that water, right?
Drinking, drinking water supplies everywhere, constantly. And, and their primary concern is that there aren't, there's not going to be erosion, sediment, turbidity, or pollutants that are entering the, the Pickering Reservoir. And, and that would be a concern, whether it was Polig builders or.
Or anybody else.
Anything else. It's a constant monitoring and concern. Probably the reason that it's taken the engineers months to be able to drill down on this.
Okay. I have no further questions on board, okay?
You said Basin A was the biggest concern right now, of the basins that are there?
No, no, Basin A is, is an above-ground basin, that is something that the engineers call a four-bay basin. Which, as I understand it, it, it does some of the, it's, it's better and more standard for removing pollutants and sediment and turbidity, because the water slows down in the various basin, the various sub-basins in it, okay? So it is not, you know, they still have to look at it, but that is something that they're, they're used to seeing, that type of design.
You mentioned that there wouldn't be any construction anywhere near the old, I guess it's the original culvert that's crossing now. That's where your high-pressure main travels across the cove.
I, I'm referring at, Mr. Cooney, as, as what, what was known as an emergency access. Is that a culvert?
Is that the current access?
That's the same.
I guess I'll defer to you. Is that going to be used as an emergency access for the, and are there any improvements that will be done on that to put guardrails on, or anything else?
Per the design right now, we didn't anticipate. We just got a letter from the fire marshal asking about, for loads, for emergencies. Worst I can see, from Mike's standpoint, would be we need to do additional paving thickness on there. And that really depends on the fire truck model that we get. Once we find out from the fire marshal what truck he's looking at, then we'll be able to find out and make sure it works for him.
Do you mean to qualify it as an emergency access?
Yes, so it will be an emergency access, so.
It currently don't, wouldn't meet the standard of.
No, we believe, we believe it does.
Oh, you do? But the word you're saying.
If we get a truck, we'll be able to confirm.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
There are guidelines, guideposts on the side, there are guard, guardrails. They were, it was constructed, reconstructed with township permits and state DEP, is that it was? And then Aqua, all three approvals of the reconstruction of that culvert.
So are they just posts now, or is there an actual guardrail?
No, just posts.
So there's, okay.
Yeah, just to, the letter that came from the fire marshal for Schuylkill was, they want a 300-inch wheelbase for the, for the truck, and a 35-ton load for it to be classified as emergency access.
Yeah, can I have that back a second?
Sure.
And we have made multiple requests to the fire marshal for the truck type. Because in order to check turning radiuses and so forth, you need a truck type, because you need to know the overhangs. You need to know the number of axles. It's not just the 25-foot wheelbase, you need more than that to be able to, to answer those questions. And we've asked that of the fire marshal multiple times without response. So if the township can help us get that information, we'd appreciate it.
We just received that response today. I don't recall receiving that multiple times in the past, but we'll certainly look into it. I got Todd's email this morning about it.
Yeah, thank you.
Get your mic there.
I, I talked about this at the beginning, June, just the dates, June 14th on the Reeves. And what does the date do on the select sites? Do you know, or?
I'll have to pull that. I'll have to pull out that sentence, that letter and, and find it unless the township.
I know it's not, I know it's not before June 14th, it was.
Oh, no, I thought it was, I thought it was like two months after the time.
All right, well.
It was initially, I can double-check it, but I have June 28.
That's what I had, June 28, then one more month would make it July 28.
Yeah, at one point, it was farther apart, but then one got extended and not the other.
Uh. This is a little confusing.
I'd be surprised that maybe that was a misreading, and maybe I didn't reference a date, I just.
If, if we need another one.
We'll find it, well, yeah, we want that to be the separation point that it was in the original separation point.
If we need one, you can send a letter for that.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
So I, I just got to go back to the emergency access. I'm not clear, you're saying that you're told there won't be any work being done in that area. So what you have there now is what it will be, the posts, the width. Is Aqua okay with that being improved, widened, putting guardrails on, and being used as part of a plan for emergency access?
I believe, I believe they are, Mr. Cooney. One, one of the things that I discussed with John after the April 24th meeting is there's obviously going to be an amendment to our 2006, 2007 agreement to capture various of these things. So for example, another thing that the Aqua engineers want to be involved in is, they want to attend every meeting with DEP and the Conservation District on the site. And Polig Builders has said, of course, we'll notify you. It's that, those kind of private things will be memorialized essentially in an amendment between Polig and Aqua. And I would imagine that as a part of that would be, if there's any changes to that emergency access or work near that high-pressure distribution line, we would be notified and be a part of that.
That's something I have concerns about. I know they're right next to each other, the old access and the new, within, I don't know what, Todd, 100 feet. So I know from living there many years ago, that that ice is up, and without guardrails, and without the width, it's.
Well, Aqua was, Aqua was a part of the approval of the improvements that were made to it last year, and was, and inspected as well.
Bill, do you have anything else?
No, I'm done.
Okay. Does the board have anything else at the moment?
I, I have a question on, I mean, from the, from the start, we've had a page of alternate design for the, for the waivers. We've had to do it that way, so that we have a plan that is compliant, but the waivers would be a better solution. And from what I understand, the township engineer has not reviewed the waiver requests at all, or that, that, those pages of, of the design of the waiver requests. But those waiver requests are a part of what's in front of you with this application. So we have no idea how you stand on those waiver requests.
I'm going to defer to Paul on it, because he's the one who answers those questions.
Correct. So yes, there is one plan in the back, that is the alternate layout plan. And it does list a couple waivers, and that's included on pages 34 and 35, that are, that were listed on the plans, so that the supervisors could see them. We defer to the board of supervisors, because you're showing a one-page plan that shows all these waivers. We have no idea of the impact of the stormwater management, the pipes that are shown in the plans, the sanitary layout. There's a multitude of things that when roads get thinner, turns, are they, are you going to cause easements with pipes going across? You can't do a full engineering review like we do on pages one through 45, and do the same thing on a one, single layout sheet that has a couple changes. That's why you can't do a full engineering review on a page.
Well, it would have been nice if you had asked for the additional information. The waivers basically are the narrowing of the road from 32 to 24 and 28. And the narrowing, and the, even though I don't think it requires a waiver because of what John Sartor testified, we have no problem if you, if the one-foot strip is dealt with as a waiver.
So as, as to, I'm going to touch on something he, he did brush on here, and then. Do you have, do you have any analysis of the, of the impact of shrinking the road there in terms of stormwater and things like he's just brought up? Like, have you, have you done that analysis? Do you have those calculations and/or drawings to back up the, the request?
Yes, we would not modify the stormwater management. So it would essentially be overdesigned, because we have less impervious. So the idea is not to, not to change the stormwater system, use the same stormwater system, but we'd have less impervious going through. I think it's between, I think it's over a half acre impervious with the savings of impervious. So I, I understand what Paul.
So you're testing, you're just noting that the, the design of the stormwater wouldn't change, and that, that that would be what Paul would need to.
Right.
Respond to, is, is that?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, there were.
And, and everything else, yeah.
Yeah, there were five waivers that were requested. Obviously, the first one, which would be reducing the carway width from 32 to 28. That's the most impactful, as Todd had mentioned, it will recruit, will reduce the impervious. In the same breath, all the stormpipes at the intersections, they're changing, they're going to turn. How's it all getting relayed out? Is there going to be any changes to the sanitary? That's why you can't get a full engineering review. It would be like giving, trying to do a full engineering review on a sketch plan. The second waiver was about the, the changing of curb. That's just for the supervisors to determine.
Changing from what?
They want concrete instead of granite.
Oh, okay.
The third is to permit building setbacks to be measured only from property boundaries, lot lines or street right-of-ways, and to not include any existing or proposed easements. Again, that would be for the supervisors.
What's that mean? Can you say it again?
So, so that would mean that if, if there's a storm easement that would go on a property, on the entire side of the property, and it would eat up the entire side yard, a house could be built right next to.
Do we currently, do we currently require the setbacks from the, from the easement lines?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And that, and that would be the difference that they would, they would, they were going to be asking for. Again, the, the fourth one is about the one-foot waiver, or excuse me, the one-foot reserve strip. And the final one is about some street trees to have a separation more than 50 feet along Eagle's Point, where it goes across the reservoir, which only makes sense. You know, in a situation like that, you can't plant trees on a, on a bridge.
Yeah.
So, but again, like I said, the, the first one is really the most impactful as far as an engineering is concerned, the rest are just for the supervisors to.
I can see how that would impact like outfalls and everything, all the way through the plan, depending on like where it lands. You have a manhole, it changes the location, the manhole maybe moves, moves your storm drains, everything like that. So yeah, I do see his, I do see his point, and I think that's pretty highly impactful in terms of whether the engineer can review and give you response to that.
Yeah, so it'd be nice to know that at preliminary waivers, because when we do the final design, obviously, all those things will come into play. So we.
Are you suggesting this would be an outstanding issue at your request for preliminary approval? That those, those specific issues, if granted that waiver, that those would be outstanding issues to be designed at finals?
Yes.
Those changes would have to be, yes. Those changes would have to occur on the final plan and get reviewed by Paul at the final plan.
I don't want to drag this thing further, further afield, but where do we end up with that school bus business, about whether they can go on?
I want, I was going to ask that question. So I, I just heard Paul read off the waiver list and say this is 28-foot cartways requested, not 24. And you mentioned 24 earlier. So is it 28 or 24 that you're asking for? And for either option, have you done the analysis to confirm that you can get a school bus down there? And another car passing in the other direction?
So to clarify, 24-foot cartway width is what we're suggesting would be on just the entry road, till we get back to our site. Then within our site, it would be 28-foot.
Is the 24 shown on the waiver plan that you're talking about? Is, is the 24-foot cartway on the entrance on the waiver plan?
No.
You're just suggesting that beyond the current request, that would be additional request?
Yeah, and that will just help us with landscaping along that entry road. So that's.
The second question being, have you done the analysis on the school bus?
Uh, Jeremy's not here. We did a truck and bus turnaround and I think they're on a buy right. That's something we could check. I doubt that would make a difference on, in terms of bus.
None of the vehicles are more than eight feet in width, so a school bus and a car could pass on a 24-foot road with no, with no issue. In the township now, they pass on 20-foot roads in some places. And there would be no need for a stop on that 24, 4-foot section because that's, there aren't any houses on there.
Except potentially the, a potential connection to the existing homes across the lost paper eas, paper road. Which, which you're providing a connection for in your plan?
We're providing an easement for them to get to that road on our property, but if the, it would only be an easement on that one-foot section because then once you're in the right-of-way, they, they could get there.
Did you, did you, sorry, um, do you wanna go?
I think we are gonna ask the same exact question. At our last meeting, we had asked whether you would, we're gonna consult, yeah, it's the same question, right? Uh, with the, the neighbors that are impacted on the Belmont Terrace side to determine whether there's any assistance that you could give them in terms of the quiet title or something, maybe just for the public's understanding. We have a road that was never built that nobody owns, nobody's paying taxes on, it exists. And so even though there is a promise of connecting an easement to Sedgley Lane, the future of Sedgley Lane, there's a piece of land there that, that's not controlled by anybody right now.
Yeah, so I can't give permission to come across that, obviously. As I recall reading something, there was an action, the quiet title by that landowner, but I'm not sure.
A claim.
The claim, yep. So I don't know where that stands. We haven't spent any, we're not, we haven't run that down.
The question.
What PennDOT asked us to do was would we allow a driveway to connect to our new road? And the answer's yes. So whether, you know, um, I don't know how the, I don't know who gets permission to come across the Belmont Terrace to connect it, but I did meet with that neighbor, Karen, and explain where that connection could possibly be. But I don't control Belmont Terrace, so I can't give that permission.
We understand that. The question, the question that I had last month, since I know I asked it, it was if you could look into assisting those neighbors with the quiet title if necessary, if there was a desire to connect there. That, that's what the question was. And the answer I'm hearing is you have not looked into that. Would you be willing to look into that is my question again.
Yeah, I think the first thing.
I'm understanding it's not your, I know, I know it's not a mandatory thing you have to do. I'm asking as, as the neighbor moving in with potentially 51 homes that.
I think the first thing that would happen is we would put them, we would give them the name and phone number of Jim Tepitsa, the lawyer in Westchester who was the one that filed the, the claim, the quiet title claim on the Belmont Road.
Wasn't that in the early 80s?
No, I think it was more in the 90s to 2000.
I thought it was a long time ago.
Well, that is getting to be a long time ago.
The 80s, the 80s was 30 years ago, so.
I know.
And I, and I, I believe, but I'm not sure, that that was on behalf of the then-owner of this property, of the property that we're talking about. So whether that, I have no idea whether that was granted and, and would not know how to really track that down, but Jim Tepitsa was the lawyer, so I would.
Regardless of all that, it sounds like the answer is no, you would not pursue it on behalf of, to assist them with, with pursuit of that.
We'll assist the way we can, but you know, it's, it's a question of what it is and, and who knows? And that's not us. That's trying to get them to the right person. If Tepitsa is the one that's the correct person, then maybe he just picks it up on, on their behalf. And, or maybe there was something that occurred by default from the lack of any objection. I don't know.
Okay, so it sounds like it's unresolved. It sounds like it's a thing we can talk about later.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We, we'll keep talking about it, but we'll, we'll try to help as we can. But we don't, we wouldn't even know right now what to file because we don't know what ever happened to what was filed.
Anything else from this board here? Anything else from you guys before we open it for a little public comment so that we can keep things together?
No, we, you, just so you understand the, the alternate design as a private road on the connection to East Phillips has with it the, the gate that would be limited to residents of, of this subdivision.
Wait, stare at there for a second. I thought the gate was on the plan that was to be voted on.
No, no. The buy right, that's not a buy right plan. That's a, that would require a waiver. Because it seemed that it was what people wanted and the Planning Commission recommended it.
This is, this is a curveball for Bill. So let me understand this. I thought that the, uh, the plan that was to be voted on in June had as part of it.
If that waiver's granted.
If the waiver is granted.
If it's not granted, there's a sheet that shows it being built without gates.
All right, now let's stay with that. You have five waiver requests. Are they all one package or can the board pick and choose waiver requests?
Oh, no, they can, the board can pick and choose waivers that count in any plan. There's not, I mean, each waiver stands by itself.
Six waiver for the 24-foot cartway. It sounds like you're gonna submit us another waiver request for a 24-foot cartway on the entrance lane?
Yeah, we'll look at that waiver letter and see whether there's any amendment to that that's needed and if so, we'll get that in this week.
Are there, you mentioned at one point that the waiver requests were identified on the plan or a plan. And then you mentioned the waiver letter. Are they the same thing or they different?
This is a funny one. None of us can find our letter of September 2nd. Paul references in his review that one of the things he reviewed was the waiver letter of September 2nd, 2022.
I haven't seen that.
And I sent you an email on September 22nd, or September 2nd, 2022 that said the following things were all delivered to the township today. And one of them that was included was the waiver letter dated September 20, September 25.
We've had a million pages. I don't remember something that says waiver list. I just don't remember that.
We have a draft, we have the draft letter. We were gonna ask Lori to give us a copy of what got filed September 2nd so that we had it as well. So that we could be sure that it, it covered everything.
Did you email it, John?
No, it got delivered by Chester Valley with plans and everything else. There's an email from me to Bill listing everything that went in that day. And that all got delivered up to the township that day by Chester Valley.
But those things were not attached to the email. They were too big.
No, they weren't attached to the email. They were listed and delivered to the township on September, September 2nd.
This sounds like a thing that you two can work out tomorrow.
Yes, yes.
Please work it out tomorrow and get him whatever he needs or get whatever you need from.
And Lori, Lori might be the, the only one that has it.
We'll see, but your documents are crashing my laptop right now, so.
Yeah, so that, that sounds like a matter that you can discuss with Bill. Thank you.
Just, uh, just to note, the, the gate is shown on the full set of plans and the gate is also shown on the alternate plan. So the gate is shown on both, just to.
But the non-gated buy-right, uh, road is shown on a different sheet. It's in there.
Paul, uh. On the creating and utility plan, there's a gate shown.
No, there's the sheet.
And then on the alternate plan.
Does it have a sheet number?
Yeah. What's the sheet number?
Hey, Todd, grab the mic. What's the sheet number?
Yeah, this was just delivered with the last set and it's just a one-of-one showing the two, the two, um, different concepts. On the left, you'll see there's a, um, just a 32-foot wide road connection. It does meet all the requirements in terms of what Paul said, in terms of horizontal and separation, those kind of things. It all fits within that either the easement or to be of right-of-way, whichever it's determined we need. And then what's shown on the plan is on the right-hand side and that shows the gate and the openings and that kind of stuff. So this is what's actually shown on the plan. This, this would be, if we don't get the waiver, this is what.
So you're saying what I said, that, that the gate's on the plan?
Yes.
It's on the plan?
Yep.
Okay.
But that, this needs the waiver.
I didn't wanna spend five years in the courts telling whether the, the gate's on the plan. Can we clarify that?
No, the, the, it's very clear. We want to build it with the waiver, the waiver shown on the plan. But we don't control whether we're granted a waiver and we can't afford a turn-down of the plan for, because the road doesn't meet the requirements absent a waiver. So you have to submit it both ways. And that's where it's submitted as the road, since we're requesting the waiver. The, the real plan now and with the recommendation of the Planning Commission, we revised it to put the waiver design on the base plan.
I, I think we get that. I, I think we get it. Don't need more, more clarification on that. Any additional questions based on the last bit of discussion? No more, nothing from you? Public comment limited to three minutes. You can come right up to the mic, please put it up. Do you mind putting it up there? And, um, and, um, state your name, address and, uh.
So my topic has nothing to do with what you guys just talked about. This is outside and that is at the end.
There's a public comment at the end of the.
Uh, this is public comment about this specific item, about anything we just talked about in this development plan.
Ellen Jansen, 15 Galway Lane. I have three questions. One is, so is it a foregone conclusion that Polig Builders will develop this property that's in discussion? So that, so it's not definitive at this point? It's not as if it's been a, that it's, that everybody knows it's going ahead and then.
That's an unfair question. No vote has been taken.
It is an unfair question.
There, there can be no presumption that the board will do anything until the board takes an action, so that is an unfair question because the board has taken no action on this plan and taken no position on the plan until we take up an action whenever we vote on it.
So it's not that it's pre-approved and then the details are being moved out?
No, this is a, this, everything's done in public. You'll know, you'll know when we vote.
Okay, and then the factors that after the building, after it's all provided, it goes ahead and the, all the factors that cannot be controlled by the developer after it's developed and he's left. Things like, that are in addition to the impermeable surfaces, chemicals, runoff, pools, basketball courts, all the stuff that will happen as a neighborhood, you know, grows up. How, how is that gonna be as people use pesticides, herbicides, put in more impermeable surfaces? The impact of that on the water and Aqua when they, they won't have any say in that.
Is your que, is your question whether Aqua's gonna be a holder of any easements or be able to enforce any restrictions?
Yeah, I guess that's it.
And maybe that's, I don't know if that's a.
Can Aqua, can Aqua say no, no pesticides?
Maybe that's a question for Aqua's council who's here.
No fertilizers, no herbicide, because all of that's gonna go to the water.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a really quick comment. They will be required to follow Pennsylvania law, county laws and our laws. So whatever our laws require, they have to follow them. If not, they get enforcement letters from our, from our township.
The first, first line of defense is the Homeowners Association, which will have regulations against pesticides. If there are violations, it'll be brought to the HOA. If they do nothing, the township has the right, but not the duty, to step in in enforcement proceedings. So we don't like to do that because it's a, it's a pain generally to do that. But normally if, uh, HOA proceedings are expensive for property owners who violate the HOA regulations. If they lose in court, they have to pay attorney's fees and it gets very expensive. There are cases I've read where the, the fine was a, you know, a thousand dollars and the legal fees were $90,000. So there is some enforcement that's available. Now again, as to Aqua, that's something else, but I, I, my guess is they're gonna be very concerned about their not being fertilized, too much fertilizer in their, in their water.
Right, and, and there, there are those fertilizer, herbicide, pesticide trucks everywhere in Schuylkill Township.
If we, yeah, and if, if we can try and keep the, um, next thing to a comment, it's typically public comment, not public question. Thank you.
Okay, well, I get a combined comment.
Yeah, understood. We'll, we'll answer what we can, but I mean. Okay, thank you. Is anybody else here to speak on this issue? Sure.
Phil Matia, 35 Cleona Avenue. I just wanna know why we're entertaining this. I mean, frankly, I wish this gentleman here was still on the open, open committee because we value Schuylkill Township because there's open places. There's not congestion. There's not overgrowth. There's not 100 more cars going in from some guy flying in and out of Florida to develop something that he's not gonna be here in three years. So I think you're doing the, the residents, if you approve this, a great disservice for our community that we love and is crumbling. You go downtown, you look what's down there. There's nowhere to park. It's a great place to be. There's nowhere to park. There's way too many people there. Value our community. That's what we want you to do. You're part of this community. This guy's gonna be in and out of here in three years. He's saying all the right things, doing all the right things to beat the waivers. Value our community. That's what we want you to do. I'll speak later on my main issue.
Are you, are you asking, are you, are you commenting on open space purchases and things like that?
I'm talking about this overdevelopment.
Or just the, the development in general?
Overdevelopment in general in Schuylkill Township. This 51 residential units is gonna be a huge burden on everybody here. Okay, and I'm asking you as a community member, as a neighbor, to consider us, not him. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Uh, please come to the mic, state your name, address.
Dennis Mastriano, 51 South Whitehorse. Just a general observation, maybe this has already been discussed. But when this property was first proposed, it was a 55-plus community. And that design, that's, so that design looks better if it's a 55-plus community. Now, when I look at those photo, when I look at their drawing, you're talking 50 houses plus and a working, brand-new home. Who knows what they're gonna be paying for those? If I'm living there, I don't wanna queue up in the morning just to get on a congested road. So moving forward, those roads that are there are not gonna work. East Phillips is talked about as gate, no gate wavering. That's gonna have to be wide open to get those cars out. If you look at the drawing, most of the cars have better access to Phillips than they do to 23. That's the better way to go. So naturally, they're gonna wanna go there, whether there's a gate, whether you're waiver. And I think what's gonna have to happen, you're gonna have to find another road. You're not gonna just have two. You're gonna have to figure out where'll at least get a third road. And once people are there, once they're living there, that's not gonna stop. So just something to keep in mind when you're considering all the fine details of what you're gonna approve and what you're not gonna approve.
Thank you. Uh, do you, do you wanna comment, Daniel?
No, I just, I, I don't believe that any of the plans that have been before the township, either this or the Plan of Residential Development one and two that have been before the township have been age-restricted.
Age-targeted was the comment.
Yeah, one, the, the PR, PRD plans, which were the higher-density plans, were marketed as age-targeted plans. But I don't believe there were age restrictions for any of those, any of the plans.
My free to go.
Go ahead, yep.
I'm Claudia Kiranen, 35 Wesley Lane.
I'm Claudia Kirn, 35 Wesley Lane. And my big concern and issue is East Philip Drive. It's the neighbors on East Philip Drive that has a cul-de-sac. It is not necessary for Mr. Polig to develop Sedgley Farm. He doesn't need it to develop Sedgley Farm. And I plead with you as supervisors to protect our residents who purchased their homes on East Philip Drive, which is a cul-de-sac, and it's been a cul-de-sac since the early 1960s, I believe. And Mr. Snyder, I believe his name is, said that we did this to be neighborly, you know, having something to do with the other property that abuts the one that he purchased under select sites. To my knowledge, Mr. Polig has never sat down with any neighbors on East Philip Drive to see how he could work something out that would be pleasing to them or acceptable to them. And I don't know if there's any way that could ever happen because nobody wants to lose their cul-de-sac. And I personally am researching out, as far as I can go, to find case law to present to you so that you will not do this. It is an abomination. And Mr. Polig, we have reached out to you many times. You know that we don't want East Philip Drive opened. And you can develop it without going into East Philip Drive. And we, we're not trying to prevent you from doing the development. You want to be working with our community. That is how you can work with our community, is, you know, we have a homeowner right here on East Philip Drive, and I've spoken to every other homeowner other than, I don't know who in your company lives in that house, but we don't want that, that opened. So please, find another way. Or, as we've discussed in the past, let our community purchase the property from you at a fair price, not, not a...
Been offered many times.
15 mil, 15 million.
And the offer was partially developed, but with open space, all open space.
Just as a note, if you want to talk, grab the mic. Yeah, rather than...
Thank you.
Thank you. Feel free. If you need to adjust it, feel free to do that, too.
Thanks. Hi, Cheryl Jones, 632 Pickering Lane. And I agree with all of the comments made so far against the development of Sedgley Farm. Already, there is so much traffic getting through 23 and even on Whitehorse. It's, you know, it takes so long to get home from work. And it's, this is just going to add so much more. And then you add the Wawa on top of all that, it's just going to make that area absolutely bare. So trying to think through and think about the current residents that have purchased in this area for that kind of quality of life, that will be significantly diminished with the development of Sedgley Farm and the Wawa, et cetera. So I just wanted to speak up and give my opinion as a resident and how I feel about it. So, thank you.
All right, thanks. Anybody else left? Seeing none, we will move on to the next item on our agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to, we're going to take a brief pause and let people who are planning to clear out for this, clear out so that we can come back in two minutes. All right. We're going to resume session. Thank you. Please, everybody, take a seat. And we're going to go on for our board discussion item number two, zoning hearing board application for 449 Valley Park Road. The applicant has a legal existing non-conforming lot with a single-family dwelling. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing home, rebuild within the same footprint and add a small porch area off the rear of the home. Zoning relief is not needed for meeting the required lot size setbacks and maximum coverage. Would you like to go ahead? Grab a, grab the mic.
Is it on? Okay. Hi, good evening. Debbie Schulsky with the firm O'Reilly, Reiper, Hanukkah, Greco, here on behalf of the applicant owner. Also with me this evening is Terry Tumalo, representative of the owner, and our civil engineer, Glenn Kelzuski. Okay. We think this application is very straightforward, so we're not going to take up too much of your time. There's an existing home currently on the property. This is a non-conforming lot size with a non-conforming lot width, with a number of other existing non-comformities, including the setbacks and the impervious coverage. The applicant is proposing to demolish the home, which is an older outdated unsightly home, and replace it with a nicer home and generally the same footprint, which will actually reduce a number of those non-conformities. It will slightly reduce the side yard setbacks. It will make the impervious coverage conforming, whereas it is currently non-conforming. So it's going to be a significant improvement in that regard. The relief that is being requested from the zoning hearing board as directed by the zoning officer was that we would need special exception approval to allow for, there's going to be a porch and a covered, covered porch and a front porch. And because the house is considered non-conforming, we're increasing the non-conforming building slightly. And your ordinance says by special exception, you can do it up to 25 percent. And then normally, you could just continue your existing other non-conformities, like your lot size and your lot frontage. But your, the ordinance says if you don't meet the setback, the side yard setbacks, you need a special exception. So we basically need a special exception from two sections of the ordinance to allow this rebuild.
Losing my mind. Okay. The height of the building, will it be higher? How much higher will the new building be than the existing building?
The existing building is a one-story dwelling and what we are hoping to build is a two-story dwelling. It'll be, it will be a very standard two-story dwelling, first floor ceilings, nine feet, second floor ceilings, eight feet. And I can probably take a peek at the plan, but, you know, I'm sure we're well within what your ordinance is. We're probably, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of 30, 31, 32.
So the, the new building will comply with current height restrictions? How large is the lot?
The lot?
It's 18,250 square feet. I believe that's the net lot area.
So it's a little less than half, half an acre?
Correct. And it's legally non-conforming in size. The, that district requires a 30,000 square foot, which obviously, when you have a non-conforming lot size, that correlates into your setbacks.
Can I make a quick correction? It is 449 Paulings. Our agenda has Valley Park.
Correct. I didn't mean to note that when I, and I forgot. Yes.
This is adjacent to the Meadows development, I believe?
That's right.
Okay. Is the square footage of the home that's going to be built consistent with what's, what's in the Meadows about?
Smaller.
Smaller.
Yeah, the house that we have planned is only 2,200 square feet. It's not, those, the houses in the Meadows are large, large-scale houses. I wouldn't be surprised if some of them are north of 3,000.
And the proposed expansion of the non-conformity is within the allowable building envelope when it meets the current setbacks and everything?
It's not encroaching any further.
It doesn't encroach further. That's what I'm asking. Thank you.
There's something rattling around in my brain here that... That...
Is that set up?
If I leave it on, then I tell jokes and, you know, they... There's something that the presumption of expansion or the expansions relate to uses and not structures, that the dimensional items are not entitled to the presumption of expansion. Is that, is...
So we were advised by, you're a very competent zoning officer, that it was an extension under, it was 37186B was the section that she said we needed the extension for. And that was really just for the, we're covering the porch that's currently there in the back, and then we're adding a front porch. And it was because the building is...
It's the same footprint, but two extra porches, is that it?
Right. Although the porch in the back is already there, we're just covering it, right?
Basically squaring off the back porch of the house.
And again, it's not encroaching any further into any of the setbacks. In fact, the side yards are going to be decre, the setback's going to be decre, the, it's going to be increasing, so the non-conformity will be decreasing.
This isn't the zoning hearing board, of course, but are we going to get opposition to this from neighbors?
So the first thing that I did when I acquired the property, one, I learned that the previous owner erected, I don't even know if you call it a detached shed, it was more like a detached garage. And so I don't know if it was Kim that reached out to us that said, hey, that needs to come down. So we took that building down immediately so that if that was something that was, you know, causing some issues with neighbors, we wanted to make sure we were good neighbors right away and took care of that. I don't know their last names. I know Larry very well. He owns the property in, I'm sorry, the name of the development that is, that, yeah. He wants us to build all the way to the fence. I said, Larry, we're not going to build all the way to the fence. We want to keep this real easy. You know, one of the things that I have done as a developer is, the first thing I do when I buy a property is I knock on doors and I reach out to the neighbors. The neighbor that is Virginia, who lives on the right side, if you're at the road, her family has owned that property for years. They were the one that actually created the hardship. They sold a piece to one of the family members instead of really thinking about, you know, what the real true width size ought to be. They just said, okay, we're just going to whack a 70-foot wide, you know, slice. And so she still lives there. I've reached out to her, you know, to let her know what, you know, we want to be able to do. And so the answer to your question is, sir, I don't believe you'll get any opposition and I will welcome those neighbors. And they're the only two true neighbors to the property because Virginia owns five-plus acres. She actually owns in back of me and to, to the right of me, if you're standing at the street. I will invite both of them. Besides, I'm sure they'll be, they'll be notified about the CHB board.
Can I make a motion, Mark?
You only need to make, a motion is only required if you are taking a position.
Okay.
Yeah, if we're not taking a position, we don't need to.
Correct.
But I just have a real quick point I want to touch on with it and then we can go on with it. I would just note, the roofed patio proposed on the plan here extends into the side yard setback and that would mean it doesn't meet the area and bulk requirements required under, what is that, 37186B and then under one, where it says it should, those, the extension of that non-conformity should comply with height, area, width, yard, and coverage requirements. So it does extend a little bit into that required yard. So just maybe look at that, see if you need a variance for that.
Which one? I'm sorry, the...
For the patio in the back.
Oh, the rear?
Yeah, the rear one. It extends right into that setback unless the setback's shorter than 13 and a half, or longer, 13 and a half.
And that was actually, we're not extending further to where the setback currently is?
You're, so you're, you're extending the build, the structure, right? You're extending a structure? You're not granted the non-conformity typically when you go, like extending a structure. Like when you extend that structure, it has to be extended within the yard requirements? And you're extending it beyond the yard requirement, if that makes sense?
I didn't think we were, were we?
It's not encroaching further, but it is encroaching in the new space being constructed upon.
Right. You know, we're not actually going closer to the side yard, but we are...
Understood.
Going farther back into it, I guess.
I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to. I'm saying you might, you might need to request a variance for that, is what I'm advising from, from my own experience with these.
Okay. We'll follow up with the zoning officer.
Yeah, if you could.
She thinks we need to. We were following her direction on the scope of the relief, so.
Thanks. That's it.
Is that a fence going right up the, I'm sorry?
Yes, the fence is on the neighbor's property.
So that old shed that you tore down was right up against that fence?
That is correct.
On the left side of the driveway?
What we're proposing to do, there's another shed there that might also be too close to the property line. We're going to relocate the other shed.
Just my opinion here. I don't think we need to oppose this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not opposed.
It's not our practice to affirm because that's the business of the zoning hearing board.
Yep, I understand that.
The best you can do here is...
I completely understand.
We don't take a position there.
I understand. To me, a neutral position is a favorable position.
Okay, seems like the consensus is to stay. Remain neutral.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right on to zoning hearing board application for 16 Prisethven Lane. Applicants proposing to construct and operate a fitness center on the property. Zoning relief is needed to allow for the use of the fitness center where it's not specifically permitted or prohibited and allow grading and disturbance of areas of man-made steep slopes. To construct the proposed fitness center and parking. Is anybody here for that one? I'm just, anybody? No. It's, it's over in, it's over on our little weird block.
It's across the street from Wendy's.
Yeah, it's across from Wendy's on that weird little block of Schuylkill Township that's like out over by Giant.
Is that Piggie Academy?
Yes.
Yeah. So...
Is this a residential house?
No. It's, it's on like, it's on like a little batch of warehouses and commercial, yeah. Yeah, it's out by the furniture stores and everything. So I guess the question for the board is, does anybody have any opinions on this? Strong, strong beliefs that we should do anything with it?
Nope.
Backs up to a quarry.
It does. Any, any concerns from staff about steep slopes being disturbed or anything? From Paul over there?
If they're man-made steep slopes, that's, that's...
Okay, they're man-made, right. Thank you. Clarify. Yeah, I like to, I saw that. Didn't register. Thank you.
I think that's a basin. I don't think it's a, I think it's a...
To make it work.
Yeah, they want to build a new building altogether. Grab your mic.
And it's just the use.
That's correct.
And all the buildings around it appear to be commercial?
Correct.
Yeah, do a comment. I'm neutral.
Sounds like we're remaining neutral. Okay, all business. Consider approval of EAC DCNR Pickering Preserve proposal. That is the Environmental Advisory Council is proposing to reforest 2.58 acres of Pickering Preserve to convert the existing lawn into woodlands using grant funding provided by DCNR. Would you like to, how do we want to handle this one?
Does the board have any questions for discussion? Karen is here from the EAC. She made the presentation, I think it was last month, last month.
No, I would just say that, I mean, currently, I don't think it's, it's aesthetically pleasing. You know, it's grassland, but I, you know, after reading the proposal and understanding the number of invasive species that are there and the desire to plant native trees, it will certainly change the lands, you know, the, the look of the area. We might get some comments from residents. We want to make sure that we publicize that and explain what's happening through our newsletter and the newspaper, and the website. But I would be in support of it.
Yeah, I, I did have some concerns about the maintenance. I, I know I've read the proposal. I see that there, there's a feeling that it would require a little maintenance, but considering, considering our very small roads department and their, their limited time and the fact that we don't have any budgeted items for outsourcing for that this year, I think I'd need to hear more about how that, how that plays into a small maintenance because we're required under this to maintain at least 70 percent of them, correct? And, and then also... Also, make sure that's tight there. And we're required to do that. And there's a proposal, and the proposal discusses removing invasives and all this other stuff. And that seems like, at least at the, at the beginning, a pretty high maintenance. And I'm, I am very concerned about a staff of, I think, what do we have, four in our roads department managing 500 trees, which is, I guess, the minimum that they would require we plant.
Yes, that's understandable. We, they require 70 percent survival...
Yes, that's understandable. Um, we, they require seventy percent survival. Uh, we could, if needed, use the EAC budget to purchase additional trees to fill that, whatever has not survived. The estimated cost for fifty to a hundred trees would be five hundred dollars, which, so if we needed to do fifty to a hundred trees every two years, we could use the EAC budget for that. Um, we would also be volunteering, um, we propose to volunteer at least once per year, possibly twice once in the spring and one in the fall, to, um, have the EAC and try and engage the public as well to help maintain, removing the invasives that, um, grow around the base of the new trees. The whole plan is to eventually reduce township maintenance on it, because it's lawn-to-habitat conversion, so we're trying to reduce the amount of mowing that will be needed. I know it will take years for those trees to grow in, but that is the whole purpose of the, of the, the reforesting is to reduce mowing, um, creating habitat, creating, um, trees that would absorb rainwater and stuff like that.
Okay. Um, and I mean, it, it sounds pretty good. I, I do still have some concern on, um, having experienced some projects with the EAC so far, I know you're, you're, you're pretty well organized with this one. I do appreciate that. I just still have concern about some of the follow-through with previous projects, and I want to make sure if this is something we do move forward on, that we have, like, I, I don't know really what assurances I would need to make sure that we have that volunteer, that, that those bodies out there helping, because like I said, um, unless we're looking to raise taxes by quite a bit to add more roads department or pay for constant maintenance by, uh, by somebody else, um, or, I just, yeah, that's, that's kind of where I'm going with that.
One example, we have been doing the, um, the road cleanup pretty regularly. Um, Earl has, from the EAC, has been organizing that. Charlie and I have volunteered to organize the yearly or semi-annually, um, cleanup of this forested area. These are native trees that shouldn't require too much additional maintenance as they're, they're supposed to be adapted to this environment, and I understand that some of the other native trees that were planted were larger trees that had root, um, girdling issues because they were bigger trees that were planted from a, um, burlap sack.
I'm even thinking the wraps, like, that protect it from the deer and stuff. Like, those crack, we have to replace them, and we have to upsize them when they get bigger for, yeah. Uh, so, that, that kind of stuff. It is pretty tedious work, and it is a lot.
And it is five hundred trees, I understand.
It is five hundred.
Yes. I, I did-
And I love trees. I want them, I want to see them.
I did it on my own property, um, and I, I know as soon as I did it, I was like, oh, what did I do to myself? Like, I, I understand, it is a lot of maintenance, but, um, I'm, I'm hoping we can engage residents to help. Um, that's part of the whole-
Is it possible to maybe engage them first? Like, engage residents first to get commitments from residents and time and get kind of a schedule in place? Uh, so that we have that before. I, I don't want to jump into it and not have that, and then we have to scramble, and, um, I don't know about the rest of the board, but I, I do have those.
My, my only concern is that it, again, right now, it's aesthetically pleasing. You drive by it, it looks attractive. Um, I understand lots of invasives are there. Uh, what we don't want is for this project to be started and then be hit with tons of complaints because of scraggly-looking trees and cracked grow tubes and things like that. Is there any thought or opportunity to scale down the project somewhat and still keep, and it's, it's the smallest it can be?
No, I, I believe we, they were, when, when we first started talking with DCNR, um, there was the township, I mean, the Pickering Preserve, but also behind this building, there was like a one acre that we had discussed, but, um, because you have other concerns about, um, potentially renovations here, we scratched that plan, but it was only one acre here, and they were still willing to do that. So I could ask if we can reduce it down to a lower.
That, that would be helpful, part, because then maybe we can stage it.
My only thought is if you kept some buffer from the road to where the plantings start, it might avoid, again, complaints from township residents about if, if, I mean, I'm sure when it's fully grown, it's going to look beautiful, but there'll be a couple of years there where it's going to be in pro- in progress.
We can, like you said, we could do some, some education with newsletter articles and our EAC Facebook as well as the township Facebook, and, but I, I do understand that concern.
Another Plan C that might help with some of the concerns here is maybe engaging Redtail on this. I know you guys are using them already for some active, uh, cleaning out some invasives, but if you pivoted them towards helping on this project, at, again, as a Plan C, just so you have a fallback net, it delays some other things, but you at least have the assurance that this project is, maintenance will happen. You've got three sets of groups.
Yeah, if that's what, if that's what the board would want, we would, I, I know there's, there's projects that Redtail's already supposed to be managing. If, if they, if you guys wanted us to shift it towards that, that's fine, but I don't know that that's what everybody would want.
I did reach out to Redtail to see if they could get me a proposal for help. I sent them this and asked for a number, but I haven't gotten a response yet. I do have concerns about the maintenance. We've talked about it. I went to the EAC meeting and, and did raise them. Five hundred trees is a lot. We have a very small staff, um, and we've never done anything like this before. So what I'm concerned about is exactly all the things that have been, been raised. There are, you know, strict requirements in here that we have to follow. I think it's a really cool program. I would love to do it. I'm nervous about what the upkeep is going to look like. We've had to do, we've had some issues with the trees that we planted last year that we've had to, you know, engage services from another company.
Yeah, and that was only eleven trees, twelve trees.
Nine trees.
Nine trees.
Even less, yeah.
Nine trees.
The only one concern I would just want to bring up is that there is funding now for this program. I don't know if we delayed it a year or two, if the funding would not be available. I mean, it could be available. There could be more funding available. I just really don't know, and I just wanted to bring up that, that point.
I agree. That is a concern. Um, it is a concern. I, I am reluctant. I think it's important that we make sure we know exactly what we're signing up for. Just because free money is available doesn't always mean that it's a, you know, the right time to take advantage of it. Having said that, I mean, it sounds like if it's an option to see if-
Scale down.
If they could scale it down, that maybe that would be something that, that-
My, my one point is that there are trees there that are, are failing. They're dying. Um, any trees we put there would help, so just not putting any trees isn't going to help any rainwater. It's not going to help habitat. It's not going to help that type of situation. So I'm just, yes, it might not look pretty to everybody, but we could help educate them. It might be some maintenance, but we, I, we will, as an EAC, try and work on that.
Yeah.
And, um, the, the replacement of the trees, when you're replacing, the, the trees that are going in are very small. Replacing them is a really quick, dig a tiny hole, shove it in, stamp it down, and move on to the next one. So it's, they're, they're inexpensive to replace and, and not very time-consuming to replace, other than you have to protect them from the deer.
Okay.
So for, you know, if you want to know what this will look like in, like, six years, do you know the, um, on Route twenty-nine on, um, the Meadow Brook property? It, it's actually part of the school district property, and you've seen all of those, um, the plastic tubes. They did that six years ago. And that's what it, ours would look like in six years. They had those little tiny itty-bitty trees. They had kindergartners go in there, and I know this because the kindergartner that did this are now in sixth grade, so that's how I know it was six years ago. And some of those trees are, you know, taller than this building.
Oh, I mean, I, I'm in support of the project. I just think that, and again, the school district probably has, has staff that can replace cracked grow tubes and, you know, various deer protections and things like that, and, um, I, I'm not opposed to the project. I just, I'm, I'm just wondering whether we want to scale it back a little bit.
Yeah. If we can get some of that, some of that scaled back and some clarification on some of the maintenance, that would be fantastic.
And if we could get a proposal, I know I requested it, but if the EAC, you know, has another idea for maybe who could provide the maintenance, and maybe we wouldn't need it, but I think it would be helpful for us to know what that cost would be.
Can I just ask, is this scaling back, like, is there a preferred acreage that I could request?
You want to start with half of what?
Do, do you want to have Lori talk with Nick and determine what might be manageable?
Well, I think the idea is that they're not going to be managing it that much. I mean, they're going to be small.
Oh, so, then, yeah, then-
I mean, I mean, I was thinking fifty percent.
Yeah.
And if that goes well, then stage the next one in in a couple of years.
Like one and a quarter acres worth of trees.
Yeah.
Do we have any, and this is something that I can look into, but I'm just, I, I'm not sure that we have any information to know that that area is well-suited. Did DCNR, when they, when they came out, they made sure, like, they're, we're not going to put five hundred in, and they're all going to die because the the ground, the soil is terrible, right?
They didn't do, like, a, a test on the soil, but it's, there are, I mean, there's trees and meadows and stuff right next to it, so I mean, unless we know that it was a toxic waste dump, I don't know. I don't know the history of the property.
I don't know if you mentioned this.
On the record, it was not a toxic waste dump.
I don't know if you mentioned this in the last meeting, but where, where on the property? Is it down in the lower part of the property that you're looking, or right where the pine trees used to be?
No, it's right up, um, along Pot House Road, um, between the shop and the YMCA.
Got it. It's a great area, yeah.
Yeah, I like the idea. I hope it-
I think an acre would be more manageable than, than, than two acres.
Okay, acre to an acre and a quarter.
So like two hundred, two hundred of the five hundred.
Okay, I mean, I'll ask, I mean, and then we would come back and-
Yeah, talk, yeah, talk again. Especially if we can get an idea from Redtail, then if we can do it with volunteers, which I'd be happy to be one of, I think you have a great idea.
I, I think it would be a good opportunity to help get the public involved in the parks and stuff like that, because we could always use help and also encourage them to plant stuff on their own property.
Yeah. I would say if we can, if you can get the updated information on a potential scaling down, and if we can, and I will help, um, because like I said, I did reach out to Redtail. But if we could get an idea of what it might cost if we wanted to hire, if we wanted to give Redtail more hours to work on it, what that might look like. The May workshop meeting is getting advertised tonight as a voting meeting, so we could put this on the May workshop agenda, so it doesn't have to wait until June.
Okay. And that's, that's the twenty-third.
It's the twenty-third, great. So if we can get the answers quickly, then we can, we can put it on there.
I will. I'll try, because it's not easy to get from DCNR, but I'll try.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
One other question for you. Uh, I don't want you to tell you, I don't want to tell you how to do your job, but, uh, have you engaged the master gardener program at all? As they have, are you familiar with it?
Like Penn State?
Yeah, the Penn State.
Yeah, we have not engaged them, no.
Okay, I, I only ask because they have, uh, every master gardener has required, um, volunteer hours they have to put in. My wife's going through it right now. I'm sure she would be interested in volunteering. I'm, I don't know if you would get some, I don't know if you would get some more dedic-, like, committed volunteers upfront, as opposed to having to advertise and just gamble on people showing up. That might give you some, like, guaranteed hands to help you, to, to help justify some of the size here, because I want to see all five hundred personally.
Did you just volunteer your wife?
I did.
Does she know this?
She needs the hours, and she likes plants, so. Exactly. I'm helping.
Good, thanks for the suggestion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thanks.
So table that.
We'll, we'll table, we'll table that, uh, motion to the twenty-third. There was no motion, no second, so tabled.
Unless someone wants to make a motion.
Unless somebody would like to.
Do we have to vote on the table here?
No. Unless somebody's looking to make a motion on it, we're, we'll table it till the twenty-third. All righty, um, speaking of the twenty-third, I would like to make a motion to authorize advertisement of the May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four Board of Supervisors Workshop Meeting as a voting meeting. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
The reason that we are advertising this as a voting meeting is to allow us to open and award our bids that were advertised at the last meeting. Um, we are bidding out our paving projects a little bit differently this year with the guidance of Penda, and it just took us a little bit longer to work with them on, on the wording, so we just needed a little more time. So that's, that's the reason that it's being advertised as a voting meeting.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I got to put that in my calendar. What time's that meeting?
Seven.
Seven. It's just our regular workshop meeting, so.
For May?
For, for May.
You said the seventh, I thought the May-
Twenty-third.
The twenty-third.
Oh, I thought you said the seventh.
Nope.
At seven.
He asked what time.
Seven here.
All righty. Uh, like, this one's a motion. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, pay application number one to Leni Electric in the amount of forty-nine thousand, seven hundred, eighteen dollars and twenty-five cents. This is the Greenlight Go Grant Project at White Horse and Valley Park. Do I hear a second? Thank you. Any discussion?
Are they almost done?
Yes.
Great.
We'll be right along.
All in favor?
They're almost done.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve and authorize our township manager to sign termination of easement agreement for UPI parcels. Parcel numbers, uh, twenty-seven, six, G, forty-two, twenty-seven, six, G, forty-three, twenty-seven, six, G, forty-four, twenty-seven, six, G, forty-five, twenty-seven, six, G, forty-six, and twenty-seven, six, G, forty-seven, as reviewed and approved by the township solicitor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I'll let Lori go ahead.
So, sorry about that, Mark, but believe it or not, that was the best way that I could come up with to put that on here.
That's fine.
Um, so this is, um, there, this resident on South Spring Lane has requested that an easement, it's an old stormwater easement that exists on his property and his neighbors' properties. Those are all of those parcel numbers. Um, it was first stormwater pipe that was shown on the original development plans that was never installed for one reason or another when the development initially went in. Um, so the easement still exists, but the actual stormwater system does not, and will never be put in. Um, so he is requesting that the easement be extinguished at this point, and we have to approve that because it was included on the development plans.
That's right, okay. The, the only reason we're involved at all is because it's on a plan that a prior board approved. We really have nothing, uh, no other interest in doing it. We understand that the, uh, the one property owner wants to have it removed because otherwise he can't build his pool in the back.
Correct.
And, uh, because we measure distances from easements. So, uh, we're not involved. We did put a, a provision in there that says that, um, uh, no claims will ever be made against the township arising out of this, uh, uh, removal of an easement, because they did try to suck us into their problem once before, so we try to stay out of problems there.
Did each of the neighbors have to sign off individually?
Yes.
Yes.
We're not in charge of running around with that. We just said, here, it's your problem, you know, and, uh, we, we don't want to be involved.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, resolutions and ordinances. Um, this is a, I'd like to make a motion to amend resolution number twenty twenty-four dash twelve preliminary final in development approval for PT Phoenixville LLC. Um, do I hear a second?
Second.
Whichever one of you.
This was a cleanup requested, uh, by Ms. Shulsky who was here. Uh, they had the wrong name on their, um, on their application. And, uh, they were wanting, and, and they didn't like the language about the sign, so it was modified in a way that didn't impair our rights. And it was helpful in the sense that we're able to add in the, uh, the hydrant, which, uh, information about that came in after the resolu-, the original resolution had been signed. So they agreed to put in the hydrant, and the, there's another piece of equipment that goes along with the hydrant, and they're going to put that in as well. So it was sort of a win-win, and, um, uh, there's nothing substantive changed in the approval resolution for the Wawa.
All right, so a motion and a second have been made. Is there any comment from the board? Any comments specifically on the items of the name of the applicant changing, location of the signage, and fire hydrants from this resolution that will change? Uh, no, thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number two under resolutions and ordinances is ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash O two adopting and enacting an ordinance codification. I'll make a motion that we do that. That we approve that, and- Any discussion? Description?
This is the ordinance that the public hearings were held on earlier this evening.
Great.
First one is for the zoning ordinance.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, this is, uh, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash O three amending chapter two eighty of the code entitled Sewer. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Brief.
This is the ordinance that was advertised at the last meeting, uh, that were the requests by the Valley Forge Sewer Authority per the EPA to update some of the definitions of the section.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All righty, two-minute reports. Um, John?
Unfortunately, I missed the EAC meeting again because they moved the date on me, pulled, pulled a fast one. Um, but I was at the Phoenixville Regional Planning Commission. I don't want to steal Martha's thunder on that, but we, uh, we talked about- Um, but I was at the Phoenixville Regional Planning Commission. Uh, I don't want to steal Martha's thunder on that, but we, uh, we talked about, uh, two trails specifically within the Schuylkill Township. Uh, namely, the, uh, we have a chunk missing, it's basically, uh, on the French Creek ex, trail extension, we have a chunk that we need to, we need to put into bridge across twenty-three. It's over on the, the western side of our township, in that little no man's land triangle. Um, so that's something we can discuss at some point in terms of getting on the budget for next year. It's really small, and it would do a lot to, to get, to just connect the trails together. Um, the other one which, uh, might not be news to you is, uh, Freedom Trail, uh, was scrapped because of, uh, the old Freedom Foundation owner didn't want to build a trail on their property. We now have a new owner. That's something that's probably worth approaching them on at some point. Um, again, depend, like, budget issues depending. Um, but from what I was told, they were the holdup to getting that trail installed. So if we can get them on board, they sound like they're really big on community engage, or he sounded like he was really big on community engagement. Seems like it'd be a no-brainer. Um, so might have two big trails in our future.
That trail would, I mean, the idea of the Freedom Trail, I believe, is to go to Valley, to connect the township with Valley Forge Park, so go through Freedom Foundation. But wasn't there an idea at one point that that would go, continue to, to sort of follow the Schuylkill River and connect to downtown Phoenixville?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if that's technically part of Freedom Trail. I'd have to check the map again.
Yeah, it runs, it, it would run all the way from Valley Forge into the borough of Phoenixville, I think through the sewer property down in Phoenixville or something. Um, so that, that, that's kind of what it's on the map right now. It's open to discussion as far as like where it would land, depend, dependent upon co, cooperation with property owners all the way through, so.
The plan's on the website.
Yeah, and the plan is on the website, as Martha noted.
Yep. That's it for me.
Danielle?
No, uh, you look confused, Lori. You're, I am contemplating whether the plan is on the website, but.
It was on the website.
It was on the website. Maybe it's on the website. We'll, we'll have somebody look around and see.
I'll clarify my statement there.
Thanks.
I, I did not attend the Phoenixville Regional Planning Commission, which was a committee which is, uh.
Right on to, uh, Martha then. Thank you.
So one of the other things that was brought up at the P R P C, um, and Chief, and Lori, you actually might find this a little interesting. Um, evidently, East Pikeville Township is looking into putting one of those, um, barriers that says, if you hit me, you're gonna hit this bridge.
It's a headache.
On, uh, Rapsdam Road. Um, I would let them do all the work, and if it's successful, copy what they did so that we can put one on Paulings Road.
Is Rapsdam a scapegoat?
Yes.
Yes.
So, um, their situation is a little different because Rapsdam Road is in East Pikeville Township on both sides of their bridge. Where our bridge, one side's in Montgomery County and the other side's here. But you know what? Let them do all the work, and maybe we can just copy what they do if, if they're successful. I'm not suggesting either one of you do anything except keep your ears out.
Yeah, my, my thought, I thought that the impediment there for the township was the fact that that is a, um, a Norfolk Southern, uh, train bridge that.
Well, we, we can't do anything about the bridge or the road, but they're, they're putting a sign in front.
No, so what it is, it's a, it's a, it's a steel post with a bar across the road, and the bar will cause headache to the traffic that is too tall. It may also act as a can opener.
That doesn't open us up to like building.
So I, I, I'm just saying, East Pikeville's looking into this. If they're successful, and if this is something we may want to do, we may want to copy what they're doing.
Yeah. A couple of bridges is pretty valuable down there.
That's, um, that's pretty much all from the, the P R P C. Um, the E A C, one of the things that, what's that?
I don't know.
What?
We wish them well.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
I just found it interesting and just wanted to, to share that information with you guys.
And PENDOT will not pay a dime. Uh, it's all out of the East Pikeville's budget, so if you have sixty thousand, seventy thousand dollars laying around to put in the steel.
Sure. I just have that right here in my pocket.
No, I understand it. How many times have they repaired that covered?
Sure, oh, no, and it's, it's, it makes sense. It's just, yeah, that's exactly what it is. It's a steel bar, it goes across, and it, that's pretty much it. Nice and simple.
So the other thing I wanted to report on was our denim and sock drive, uh, finished, um, April thirtieth. And, um, I'm pleased to announce, I set a, 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 a goal of collecting five hundred pounds. Um, we collected eight hundred pounds of socks and denim, and some of the boxes are still out in the, um, in the lobby, and I will get to them and get them out of here as soon as I can. Um, two things I wanted to let everybody know. Again, these items will be going to, um, manufacturers to create new products as opposed to going into our landfills, and we have other municipalities that are actually interested in doing their own textile drives um, because of the success of this drive. So it's spreading, so it's actually a really good thing. Um, next week, I do want to send a report. Uh, I've been asked to send a report to Patty Lynn, who is the, um, recycling coordinator for the Chester County Solid Waste Authority um, about this drive, and she wants some pictures. Valentina, I know you've been busy this week, so I haven't bugged you. Um, but I do want to get that information to her, and it was a really, really good success, and, um, maybe we'll do it again next year. And the historical commission, there's nothing to report.
Thanks. Uh, Bob?
Uh, didn't make the open space, uh, was not able to make the last open space commission meeting, but did get a full report from Tim McAvoy, and, uh, good progress being made with the outreach, uh, group there, and fingers crossed, and some things are progressing in different areas, so, uh, other than that, nothing to report.
Thanks, and, uh, there was no planning commission. Um, we did, uh, swear in our chief recently. Thank you for everybody who attended that. And, um, thanks, Chief, for bringing out a crowd. Alright, um, Lori, go ahead.
Just briefly, um, because we've, we've talked a lot tonight, but our municipal complex renovation plan is, is going well. Next week, uh, we have bi-weekly meetings with the architect, and next week, we are doing um, the site survey with the H V A C people and the technical people to start working on our actual plans. So moving, moving along. That's it for me.
Go ahead, and Chief, come up.
Thank you for the comments, and thank you for being there. Appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, I have the usual report that I believe you all have copies of. If you have any questions or concerns, I can answer them. Other than that, uh, as Lori said, soon, with the traffic light down here, I stopped and spoke to the contractors, and they're don't want to be quoted, but they're hoping within two weeks that that'll be resolved, so we won't have the complaints about the traffic backing up on White Horse trying to get to twenty-three. So, and it sounds like a pretty sophisticated system. You all are probably more aware of it than me, but I didn't realize that it was radar controlled, and it's gonna, it counts the cars, and it's gonna adjust the time based on that. So that should be a huge improvement and coordination with, uh, Pot House and White Horse.
When, um, we applied for this grant for this, one of the things that we asked for is we wanted to make sure that these traffic lights were state-of-the-art. Now, that was six years ago, so when this started, so maybe there's even more fancy stuff, but I'm really glad that it's, uh, gonna be state-of-the-art.
It's gotta be better.
It's gotta be better than what's there, yes, absolutely.
That's all I have. She got nothing for me.
Yep.
Nothing? Alright.
Thanks.
Township engineer, Paul?
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, just an update. The sidewalk plan, uh, was converted into our, uh, plan sets, and we did submit it to PENDOT on this past Friday. Uh, again, just a, uh, reminder, it's to try to find some high-level comments that they're gonna go with. Uh, in the next month, we're hoping to have a site walk, uh, may, with township management, maybe Nick to go through it. Uh, just over the course of time, um, you know, the property owners have done different improvements on their lot. Things have changed, trees have grown. And we want to try to see if the survey plan that we have as our base is still good, or if we're gonna need to, uh, talk about having, uh, some additional survey collected.
Thanks. Onto additional business, uh, discussion on agenda items for upcoming workshop meetings. Does anybody have any topics they'd like to discuss?
So, I think the only thing, and it's definitely.
No, oh, Mike.
Sorry. Mike, who? Um, the only thing that I, um, brought up before was, you know, like, uh, John said about, um, these trail connections and trails. Maybe we can put the, um, sidewalk and the trail. It's not a rush, so it's not like we have to have this done at our next, you know.
I was gonna say the same thing. I, 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 it would be nice to talk, to discuss that, but what our, what our plan of attack might be to connect.
Sidewalks, trails, outreach, everything, yeah, that'd be great.
Um, but other than that, I mean, that's the only thing that I can think of. And, and as far as getting back to the P R P C, they're in a rush.
For the May workshop, we do have, um, what I would say is probably a full agenda. We have our twenty twenty-three audit presentation that evening by the township auditors. Um, we'll be awarding, hopefully, several bids that evening, um, and we will now add on, uh, the E A C, the Pickering proposal to that.
Great.
But I will keep future topics of trails and sidewalk on future workshop agenda.
Do you think it's gonna take the whole meeting, the audit, the presentation, and the vote on?
I would say between those three things, we probably don't want to add too much more on the agenda.
Well, I'm sorry, what was the third thing? The audit report, the?
E A C proposal, the bids, the bids we had, that we had to advertise the meeting for.
The bids on the, okay.
If you have something else, if you have something you want to discuss this month, I, I don't know that we're ready, we're not ready to talk about the sidewalk, I would say, this month. We need to do, we have other work that needs to be done on that first.
Okay, trails for June then?
Okay, uh, do I have any announcements?
Nope.
Great. Anybody on, anybody else on the board have announcements? I'm gonna take that as a no. Um, so we are on to public comment. Uh, since I do see the fire department, I'll invite you up. If you have anything you want to share, feel free to come right up to, up to the mic. Oh, definitely to the mic, yeah.
Sorry, Tom, you're not getting off that easily.
No, we gotta, we gotta make you do your exercise today.
The trip's gonna take longer than the message. Uh, we have a car show scheduled for May twenty-fifth with a rain day to May twenty-seventh. Last year was the first year. This year should be bigger and better. And then we have a committee meeting on the twentieth. Right?
Hey, Tom, I saw in the report that there were, um, some car rescues this month. There were, so what do, what do those generally entail? I was just curi, I was just curious.
It can be anything from stabilizing a vehicle.
It can be anything from stabilizing a vehicle and getting a person out without cutting him out, or to a more involved rescue of, we had one up on, uh, White Horse at Ashenfelder where we, uh, cut the entire roof off the car, right? Or the door. We took the, uh, door and the B post off and got the person out from the side. So it just depends on how the impact was.
Wow.
How often do you see accidents up in that area of Ashenfelder and White Horse?
Not very often. Um.
Is it the last year?
Yeah.
That's a couple of year.
Yeah. Sometimes in the S-band. Some, this one happened to be up just past Ashenfelder, actually in Charlestown is where the vehicle came to rest.
How many at the intersection of Ashenfelder and White Horse?
At the intersection of Ashenfelder and White Horse. Is that a hotspot?
No. Pardon? Yeah.
Just curious. Okay.
Alright, thank.
Thanks.
Thanks very much.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, general public comment. Would anybody like to make any comments?
Hello again, Phil Matia, thirty-five Cleona Avenue. Uh, I have concerns. I emailed you all. Ms. Getz got back to me with a lot of information. Appreciate it. Um, greatest concern, I stated earlier, was just all this overdevelopment. Like, what are we getting out of this community? I, I don't think there's anything we're getting out of it other than headaches. Specific to me and some of my neighbors back here, Cleona Avenue has been a known problem. Mr. Brennan, you were here as a solicitor back in twenty fifteen, when we came and had a speed study done on our road, because people were using it as the freaking Audubon. The speed is still there. Lieutenant, now chief, Fitzsimmons was there trying to do a police detail and slow down the, the, the speeding on, on the street. Now we finally have stop signs. We still have people speeding up there. The Wawa traffic study, I think, is a joke. To find that there actually is a decrease in weekday P M, peak hour trips is a fraud. There's no way that P M trips are gonna go down at Wawa. They go up by ninety-four percent on Saturdays. They go up by thirty percent in the A M trips. There's going to be more traffic. You need to expand and do a traffic study for our road, a cut-through road. If you ever try to make a left off of Cleona onto Route twenty-three, it is literally an accident waiting to happen. The same thing for turning left off of Vincent and left off of Rossiter. With the increased traffic flow, maybe a hundred new cars driving out of this Reeves Park, Reeves, residents that we're putting in, potentially a Sheetz, where's the Sheetz stand? What, what, when are we gonna have the oversaturation where people just move the hell out of here? There's, there's, this is not the community we want. It's not, I don't think it's what I want. I know it's not what I want. I don't think it's what you want either. So I'm begging you, please, for, at least for my road, let's do a traffic study. I'll get the petition, we'll get all the signatures there to put some traffic calming measures. We have a lot of elderly people, and we got a lot of kids on our road. It is not safe. It is one of the narrowest roads in the Commonwealth, as stated by the supervisors in twenty fifteen when I was here. We need something to be done. If the Wawa's a foregone conclusion, I guess I can't do anything about that. The Sedgley Farm should not go through. Do everything you can to move that away. Same thing with Sheetz. We don't need this. We're a community that has what we need. You are the elected officials. I can't go and do anything other than come here and plead with you and provide suggestions. I appreciate your responses.
So part of the reason I'm in this seat is because I did exactly what you did twenty years ago. Came in and saw what was happening and said, hey, let's do something about it. And what we did was created an open space commission. Now, the man that was here tonight, and I, and a couple other people got together, and we said, let's buy down density wherever we can. It's helped. Uh, but I remember one of the supervisors at that time said to me, this is uh, a nationwide growth issue that, you know, Philadelphia used to be a tiny little place, and I'm sure these kind of messages came over and over again. And what I was told was, uh, all you can do is try to adapt, engineer for it, uh, look for the, the issues that can be resolved, but there's many that can't when it comes to sprawl. The property owner has rights. Uh, if you owned a hundred acres and, and everyone was screaming at you, hey, don't develop it, we gotta stop it. You have rights. We can't tell you that you can't do it. So we have to try to engineer the best we can for it. So, but I hear your plea for Cleona. I think that's something that, you know, I'd be concerned about too.
Yeah, I, I appreciate your concern, and, you know, I, I just think in response to that, you may not be able to not allow them to do it, but you can sure make them meet every single, every single specification you can to make sure that it is meeting everything that this, uh, community wants and needs to make it the most beneficial it can be if it must go through.
Yeah, and, and we do engage with our engineer in deep, deep, deep dives on these projects because we, we, we just cannot help ourselves with the details. Uh, so we do, we do whittle down all the details, including the traffic studies and everything. That's why, um, we get commitments like, uh, upgrades to the intersection and everything like that from our developers without, with, in the, in the township, without any big fuss about it, because we, we do beat them up on those details as much as we can. Uh, and understanding the concern on your Cleona there, I, I've been down Cleona, I'm, I'm aware of it.
If you try to make a left coming, when it goes in PENDOT from thirty-five to forty-five inexcusably, I have no idea why they'd say, hey, let's accelerate turning off the Star Street so we can just blow people out of the water. You're gonna have more people down there at that Wawa. It's not gonna get any better. Like, you, you need a petition PENDOT to slow that down. It's, it's, it's not, it's not gonna be helpful at forty-five.
And, um, that, that I believe would be part of the petition for traffic calming measures if, if we get a petition that, uh, is significant and significant enough or sufficient to meet our traffic calming measure requests and things. Those are things we can probably, I, I think, is speed limit something. Now, that's a petition. We would have to petition. We do not control PENDOT roads.
Correct.
I'm, I will make that note. They can ignore us entirely if we make that petition, but, but, um, if, if we do hear a loud cry from residents for that kind of petition on our, on our behalf, then we could maybe consider it. So that's, that's gotta, I, I don't know what that means as far as like our traffic calming measures. I'd probably look at that as like the protocol for, for how to, how to ask for that petition.
In the short term, I'd ask that if Chief Fitzsimmons and his crew can, although they're stretched, and that Wawa being twenty-four hours is not gonna help matters, when they're pulled over there for nothing good happens after midnight, I'd rather have them work in residential than have to work at a twenty-four-hour Wawa with all that light pollution, traffic, and riffraff that's gonna go there. But I guess that's a done deal already. But they, we could have some kind of presence in the short term until we get this petition signed. That would be helpful. It's getting, it's getting nicer.
I'll leave that to you with coordination with staff. Uh, that's, that's a matter to talk. I'll leave that to you with coordination with staff. That's, that's a matter to talk, to talk about.
Just a couple, just a couple of questions. Is Cleona, because a couple of years ago, I'm, I'm very sympathetic. I live on a neighborhood where I have to make a left-hand turn on the westbound onto twenty-three as well. It is extremely challenging. And, but again, we don't control PennDOT roads, and a warrant analysis for my particular neighborhood was not taken up by, by PennDOT. They determined there was no, even though it's really hard for Danielle to make left, they would not put a traffic light up there for me. I'm just wondering, I mean, the, the things that we can control, and, and, because we are, right, we're a creature of statute. We can only do what we're permitted by the law to do, although we would all like to do other things, I'm sure. We can, you could, we could do a warrant analysis for Cleona and twenty-three to see if they would put a light, but I think it's highly unlikely they would put a light so close to the one on Star Street.
Yeah, it would just cause more traffic congestion.
And then the, the other thing, I mean, is Cleona, is it, is it a twenty-five or is it thirty-five?
Twenty-five.
It's twenty, it's already twenty-five, so that's one thing that we could reduce, it's the lowest we can go.
Yeah, any other traffic calming measures is what we'll put in the petition. I don't know what that would look like. But, you know, you, you already have an issue with the White Horse light. It's not gonna get any better with the Wawa light, and people are gonna look to cut through as they're trying to cut any time they can get off commuting down to work. We are, we are a cut-through. I don't know where you live, but we are a cut-through.
Yeah, Valley Park should cut through too for twenty-three.
He mentioned it, but a couple of years ago, there, there were additional, at least one additional stop sign installed. Additional stop signs installed on Cleona.
Is there, and I'm not saying this would be palatable to your neighbors, but is there an opportunity to make it a one-way road?
I don't know the answer to that.
It's pretty dang near already. I don't know.
I mean, if, if, if the issue is eastbound traffic in the morning is cutting through Cleona to get, you know, that's, I'm just trying to throw things out.
I don't think on a public road that we can do that. We'd have to have a, yeah.
You could make it a cul-de-sac and not blow it out.
I love that suggestion.
I'm, I'm just saying.
I appreciate the thought. I don't know, I'd be all right with that.
Creative, creative solutions.
Speed bumps or dips.
All those are, I appreciate the consideration. I know I blasted it with email, but I'm very, very passionate about this. Like, it is, it is just not safe. And the congestion that we have in our area is just, you're also gonna feel it. We're all gonna feel it.
I mean, I, I live on a pass-through road, I'm aware of it. I'm, I'm on a flat lock, so I mean, everybody passes right by. So I'm aware of how it works, I'm, I'm very sympathetic to it. And so within the power of what we can do, we can only do what we can do. But, but if there's ways we can work with you, we'll try to. If we can't, then apologies in advance, because we are very, very limited by that being a PennDOT road right outside of where you live.
I understand what that is. I will put the petition forth, and hopefully, the, the chief can, can lend some assistance with some, you know, presence that would be helpful to start.
Thanks for speaking up.
Thanks for hearing me out.
Does anybody else have any comments today?
Hello, everyone. Mike Spear, forty-five Cleona Avenue. Thanks for taking your time to listen to us. Real quick, and just, I just wanted to echo the same sentiments that Phil shared there, and maybe just a couple additional points that I just would like to bring up. Don't really, you don't feel like you need to respond. Some, some things with the Wawa as well, as to what Phil said. My concerns, just looking things up about when a convenience store moves into a neighborhood, light pollution, noise pollution, other safety concerns, this traffic study sounds like a great idea, especially for Cleona. Things to consider, bike lane, sidewalks. I haven't, I haven't been to one of the, to one of your meetings here in a while. I was trying to look over previous meeting notes. I was also looking on the website for lighting ordinances. I didn't see now anything about lighting ordinances. Now, I didn't click through all the ordinances, so I definitely could have missed something. But I was just looking at general, like I'd said, complaints that people had when something like that moved in, and noise and light was a big one, so.
Lighting, lighting's, I can answer that really quickly. Lighting is required to be reduced to zero foot handles at the edge of the property, which means it's not allowed to spill over. And it's not allowed to glare in your eyes, like you can't, can't point a, I can't point a flashlight at you from the property like this and just leave it there forever. That's, that's like the standard. It stops at the property line, and that, we, we enforce that with screening, buffering, if necessary, or they angle the lights so that it doesn't go off.
Yeah, yeah, no horizontal, right. Yeah, yeah, forty-five degree. Yeah, that's definitely a concern of ours, is obviously light pollution, noise pollution, things. That people said, like, no running a trash compactor from ten, from like ten PM until, they'll say, six AM, no receiving deliveries. That's what people have put forward, and that worked. So I don't know if that's something we'll get in front of Wawa, or if that's something we need to work on to like curtail those issues, just because there are a lot of residents there that might be impacted by those type of noise and stuff.
I just want to address the sidewalk issue. So when the vote came up for the Wawa, that was something that they sought a waiver of as our requirement to put sidewalks. We pushed back on that. I mean, there was unanimity on the board. We pushed back on that to require them to put sidewalks in twenty-three. That is, our plan is to extend sidewalks on both sides of twenty-three to connect the borough with that part of the township. And so we take that very seriously.
That's great, yeah. There are a lot of people that walk. You can probably see some of the neighbors have, like, like John's house here has dirt on pathways, because clearly there's SEPTA, SEPTA stops and stuff, so I think those, those safety enhancements would be really welcomed along with this Wawa. So I'll, I'll try to come to more meetings and stay on top of this. And like we said, just, it's for the community members where we live, we are concerned about it. So I appreciate you, again, taking your time and hearing us out. Thank you.
Thanks.
Ellen Jensen again. In relating to this, does the Wawa have to be a twenty-four-seven operation, or can it be restricted to decrease the negative impact on the adjoining neighborhoods?
We tried to, we tried to put a condition in with the Wawa the last time, saying that we wanted to limit the hours, and the judge threw it out. The argument was that we have other places, no, nobody else, you know, had such a limitation. And it was just, we couldn't do it.
I remember it coming up, and I, I didn't know what happened. And what about the Sheetz proposal? Is that, that's really, I've seen it in writing now, so.
It's very preliminary. We haven't had any reviews.
Okay. And then the property on Valley Park Road that was the Anderson Farm, I'm not sure what it's called now. Now, pink flags have shown up, like they're, might be making a new driveway in that area where they've renovated, they redid the whole barn. It almost looks like, people in my neighborhood keep saying, is that gonna be an event space, and we just don't know about it? So that's the, do you know what's going on?
We don't know anything about that. It could be survey on their lot. I don't know what it is.
Initially, I thought that, but if you look, it's, it goes in like a pathway.
If they do anything, we'll notice it.
Is there, is it, is there any plan for event space there, or the construction?
As far as I'm aware, they're not allowed to.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Part of me?
Nothing's been proposed for that.
Okay, I wasn't aware of it.
And it's, it's zoned residential.
Yeah, yeah.
Commercial operations are prohibited on residential properties, so if they're doing it, they're doing it in secret without our knowledge.
Someone told me they went in, and there were a lot of toilets, as if there were going to be multiple restrooms, so.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
John Spee, five-two-five Valley Forge Road. So I'm right on the main drag there. I'm kind of all right with the Wawa. I'm just very concerned about the Sheetz also. My concern is the need for two of those large facilities at the same spot. So I'm just kind of expressing my thoughts on, you know, one, I can accept. Two, I think would be overbearing. So I'm kind of urging the, the board to really consider that if that comes through to a vote. I've been there for twenty-four years now, and seen traffic raise a lot over the years. But I think two additional big facilities like that would really deter us from being there anymore.
Since we've been kind of doing a little bit of education tonight, the, if they come in with like a proposal that meets our ordinances and things like that, so like if, if they do propose something that fits that space under the zoning, not, not necessarily like, maybe we don't want a Sheetz there either.
Yeah, right.
But we have to look at the zoning and everything like that, so if it does meet that, we can't deny it. So just take that into consideration while we're processing through this. We will, if we are forced by, by our zoning to allow it, then we will do our best to mitigate any negative circumstances that may arise from it.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Sheetz wasn't surprised to learn that Wawa was there. They've done their homework. And I did ask the question, are you on the same intersection with Wawa anywhere else, you know, in Pennsylvania? And he's, the lawyer said he wasn't aware of any.
Okay.
So it may well be that they've decided to, you know, in our little township, to do a cage match here to see who wins. Local concern is that, well, I think they'll both survive, but we don't want to have empty buildings there if they, one of them ducks, the other one does. So we're, we're aware of all that.
Right? For how long? Yeah, that, again, that was my concern. It's like putting two pharmacies next to each other, like, someone's gonna have to bail eventually, so.
One of the things we learned in one of the meetings is that the, well, I'd say, I'd say some of them are being sized because of the opportunity for alcohol sales. Which, if you and your, you know, fellow citizens want to put together a ballot amendment to restrict, I think that there's an opportunity to do that. It's just something that would have, it would be very, very time-consuming.
To organize, yeah.
To organize that. But we do have certain powers as a township to limit alcohol sales in certain types of businesses. Again, it's not impossible, but it's, would be extremely challenging. So, but a nice hobby.
Yeah. My free time, man. Thank you.
Thanks.
How you doing? My name's Jason Piambino, fifty-five Cleona. Those are my neighbors, so I'm not gonna repeat the things they said. I just had a quick question in regards to sort of the genesis of the Wawa. I thought that that was supposed to go into where the Sheetz is proposed.
Different developer.
Different developer.
So they are franchised, and they had different developers. So the one developer was looking at the Royal Bank property, the other looked at the Exxon and said they want to build there.
So was the Royal Bank sort of abandoned from a zoning standpoint of that fuel couldn't be so close to one of the residences?
It has to be two hundred, two hundred feet from a residence, residence, like the actual physical structure, I think. It's two hundred feet.
It is feasible that they could put something in there with eight to ten gas pumps, and it wouldn't?
It's proposed with five or six? Five, five, five fueling, five pumps with ten fueling stations, so like double sided.
Is that what Wawa's is too?
That's exactly what Wawa's is.
So Bill, my understanding is Wawa abandoned the Royal Bank property not because of any of our zoning, but because of?
There was a dispute between the property, oh. There was a dispute between the property owner and the intermediate level, level developer about the deal that they made. Wawa doesn't build the building, they take it over after it's completed. And so after the approvals were granted with conditions, and after the court threw out most of our conditions, it sat, and then we realized there was this lawsuit. And then the Wawa walked away from it, and it, you know, it ended. But at that point, you know, it took a while. We heard from Royal Farms or somebody, but finally Sheetz came in, and that's, that's how, that's how it went.
So, again, just to say what they are saying, that, you know, just a common thought is that these two being there with the traffic already being impacted, this development and all that, that it's incumbent on you, yourself, to make sure that you do everything possible to prevent what seems to be common sense to most people who live in the community.
Well, we, we are doing everything we can, but we are constricted by the regulations, the Celdo, and the, you know, the MPC gives developers rights, and we have to deal with it, yeah.
I get it. All right, thank you.
All right, any additional comments? Going once, twice, and no. All right. The board will continue with an executive session after this, and do I, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.